Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council, the City Council meeting in Greenwood. This Monday, October the 5th at 7:02 PM. Ms. Berry, would you call her over, please?
Yes. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Maker?
Yes.
Ms. O'Carroll?
Here.
Ms. Powell, Daddison, Icy Brown?
Here.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
For the Forum.
Thank you very much. If you would fall, please rise. We will begin our meeting with a prayer. Today by our brother John Miller from the verse of simply God here in Greenwood. All by pledge allegiance and I ask to our councilman, Daniel McDaniel, to see.
Let's pray. Father, amidst all the chaos and all the problems that we are seeing in our country right now, with the looting and the burning and the protesting, and we're also dealing with this pandemic. We thank you, Lord, that there is a solid rock that we can stand on, and that's you. We thank you, Lord, that you're always with us, no matter what the problems or difficulties are. I also thank you, Lord, for the opportunity that we have to pray at these meetings, Lord, because that means we are asking you to be a part of them, asking you for wisdom, and that's what your word said you would give us in James, chapter 1, verse 5. You said, "Is any man lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives it to all men liberally." So, right now, I pray for every council member. I pray for the mayor, everyone who will be involved in this meeting today, Lord. I just pray that you will give them wisdom to know what to do, because we thank you for this great city we have to live in. Greenwood's a good city, but we have rules and things that we have to abide by, and the council has to come together, and this is what they're here for, Lord. So, I just pray for that wisdom to be released right now in this meeting, Lord, that whatever is decided will be what you have in mind and what you want, and we'll give you thanks and praise, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe Seaton? Thank you, Brother Miller. I told him I was gonna call, and he said he had to say for home meetings. As you can see, he didn't like it. I don't think he'll do it, right? We do have seats open up front. If anybody would like to take a seat, you're welcome to. At this time, I would ask that the council, if you not had a chance, take a few minutes and look at over the minutes for September 14th, regular council meeting, and looking for approval of those minutes.
I have one little correction there in the adjournment.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Terry? May I motion to adjourn until the chairman's not in there? May I just say?
May I make a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
Second. The motion is second to accept the minutes with those changes?
Ms. Maker?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Thank you. At this time, in our agenda, it's recognitions and acknowledgements. I am going to recognize that we have a nice crowd tonight. I do not necessarily apologize, I guess, but we are appreciating everybody being considerate in the social distancing. I know it may be hard to hear if anybody's out in the lobby, but we're doing the best we can under the circumstances. So, thank you for being here at Citizen Forum. If you've signed up tonight and you have a chance to speak during Citizen Forum, and those rules are you have five minutes after you come up and give your name and address, or give us your name and address, and then you can state your business to the council. I do want to acknowledge that we have a candidate for Circuit Judge here tonight, Mr. Greg Magnus, and you can go ahead and come up and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank the council members for allowing me a few minutes to speak. As the mayor said, my name is Greg Magnus. I'm an attorney here in Mount Sebastian County. I'm running for Circuit Judge. As many of you know, Jamie Clark, James Clark is from Greenwood, is retiring, and I'm running for his spot. And so, I hope you remember two things. This is a nonpartisan race. I'm at the end of the ballot, but I'm on the ballot, so don't stop the president. But I want you to remember two things about me. Number one, as most of y'all know, this county has two county seats, Portsmouth and Greenwood, one of the few counties in Arkansas that has a dual county seat. A lot of times cases don't get from Greenwood, you try it in Portsmouth, and my intention is to try Greenwood cases in Greenwood, and here Greenwood matters in Greenwood. And the second thing I want you to remember, and the reason I started this 16 long months ago is I believe in our Constitution. I'm a constitutionalist, and I'm like, because a lot of times, a judge is the last line of defense for protecting constitutional rights, and that's the reason I'm running for this position, and I appreciate your vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would hope that I've known Mr. Magnus many years, and my life was back back in the day when he was supposed to be the Secretary of State. Very, very good attorney. I also know that you said James Clark. I think you meant James Cox.
Oh, Cox, I'm sorry. Yes, Jamie, Jamie, yeah, I just, I'll try to remember whether I should say James or Jamie, because we call him Jamie, and I didn't know what y'all call him, so...
We call him a lot of things, and that's all fair. I do have one comment. I'm sorry to interrupt you. What are you gonna do about the bow tie? Because Jamie got Judge Cox, he wore a bow tie.
Yeah, I like the bow tie.
Okay, I'll just check, I'll just check to see if you have one.
No. Yeah, he's been a great judge, and I'm not just saying it because I'm in Greenwood. What I like about him is he's approachable, he knows the law, but he's also approachable by attorneys, and he's fair to the parties. And I've been, I've literally been in court every county in this state. That's no exaggeration, and most of the counties in Oklahoma as well, as I practice in Oklahoma, too. And let me tell you, there are some judges that are the opposite of that, and they try to embarrass people, or at least it seems like they do. And he never did that, and I always appreciate that about him. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Okay, on to committee reports. I believe all of those are submitted via email, but I don't have any written in my book. Do they have a copy written also?
They have it on their tablet.
So, it's on the tablet. Sorry, I forget we have tablets now. We're not, we're not.
SRCA, she didn't get it, so I think she's gonna try to get it tomorrow. I don't know.
So, as always, if you see an issue on any of those reports or any questions, please let me know, or in my office, Daniel, we'll reach out to those folks, whether it be SRCA or Parks, or whoever. I know, I thought I saw somebody from the Parks Commission. Maybe not. My team is here. Oh, you're not, you're not here, are you? Rose? Okay. So, any questions or anything, just let us know. Yes, sir?
Is the street department here, yes?
Can what?
The street department here, yes?
Yes, he is here, right there.
I have just a question about the Jay Hocker Road. I like the official.
Yeah. Absolutely. Is it official, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I made it that way, is that okay?
It's like the nine little workers.
Yeah, absolutely. Is it signed up? Okay. It's made, but we're ready to put it up. Yeah.
I'm sorry, the officials did it?
Yeah. I got approval from the gentleman that purchased that property firm to make sure that we're good and he thought it was funny.
I like it.
All right.
There's no concrete in it.
And we're moving on. Citizen Forum is where we are, and I have several, five folks that have signed up tonight. And so, if you would, I'll call your name, and I'll try to get it right. I believe it's Angela Neese. I got the correct one a while ago. So, get set the microphone, and again, I'll remind everybody you have five minutes to speak. If you would, just give us your name and your address.
Yes, Angela Neese, 1005 South Oak Street, Greenwood. Hello, everyone. How are you? Good. Good evening. My name is Angela Neese, and I am here seeking your support in a resolution to call an end to the state of emergency via a special legislative session. Please note that this resolution is not about a mask or taking anyone's right to wear or run away. It is about some of our children wearing masks or not. I know this is a touchy subject right now with people. It's a difficult one. So, what events have brought you in here tonight? As a wife, mother of four, and longtime member of this community, it has become increasingly apparent that many people are ready for a change and are asking, "What is next for us?" I talk to many, many people every single day who share these same concerns, many of whom are afraid sometimes to speak out for fear of repercussions from their employer, or coming across as uncaring or insensitive. But I can tell you that the narrative is pretty consistent across the board. As a mother and a member of this community, I have seen what the seemingly endless and inconsistent directives and mandates have done to our children and businesses. Our kids are being robbed of their childhoods, and our local restaurants have been bombarded with so many restrictions that some have not opened their doors to dine even seven months later. Our elderly are wearing away nursing homes for failure to thrive and from not being able to see their families. They deserve so much better. Who is advocating for them if not their families? I think in the beginning, most, if not all of us, were willing to do what we needed to do to shut this virus down. I know I was. But now that we know more about it and are better equipped to deal with it, when will we move on to the next phase of fully reopening our state? This was never about ending the virus. It was about flattening the parrot and slowing the spread. The endless state of emergency is causing more harm than good at this point. As a business owner and member of this community, I feel it is my responsibility to voice these concerns of our community members to you, our mayor, and our city council members, so that you can make an informed decision on representing our community. And I'm gonna read that resolution to you. A resolution by the City of Greenwood, Arkansas, in support of restoring freedom, personal choice, opportunity, and governance back to the local and state elected officials. Whereas the City of Greenwood, Arkansas is a thriving city, responsibly enacting ordinances and affirming resolutions for the safety, prosperity, and well-being of citizens, visitors, and businesses. And whereas the citizens of the City of Greenwood, Arkansas have elected local officials and a mayor and city aldermen to lead our city. And whereas the City of Greenwood, Arkansas has demonstrated the ability to lead in trying times and in difficult circumstances by bearing forth experts, business leaders, and citizens. And whereas the City of Greenwood, Arkansas has demonstrated its ability to create a civil environment that is attractive and economic atmosphere that is conducive to success, and a diversity of industry that is growing, providing our citizens a wide range of employment opportunities. And whereas our local businesses have demonstrated tremendous courage, perseverance, restraint, and outstanding decision-making capabilities. And whereas the citizens and businesses of the City of Greenwood, Arkansas have suffered and continue to suffer undue damage and harm resulting from the diminishment of personal responsibility and the freedom to engage in commerce and live, move, and have our being as a result of an exercise of excessive and inconsistent state control and power of the local government's businesses and schools beyond what is reasonable, right, and true. Whereas being in a state of emergency since March 2020, the citizens and businesses in the City of Greenwood, Arkansas feel the perpetual extension of the state emergency by the means of the Emergency Services Act is an overreach of the spirit of the law and a main contributor to the said damage and harm. Therefore, be it resolved this fifth day of October in the year 2020? Fifth? I'm sorry. The City of Greenwood, Arkansas supports and strongly encourages an end to the inconsistent harmful and damaging directives and policies against the citizens, schools, and businesses of the City of Greenwood, Arkansas. We now implore the governor of the state, Arkansas, to restore a representative government of the people, by the people, and for the people by ending the practice of perpetually assuming the state of emergency without direct legislative involvement and returning governing authority back to state elected officials. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I appreciate you for writing in the back. And you've obviously done your homework and put together quite a bit of information.
Thank you.
You want to address that at this time, or?
Yeah. I know that there is litigation currently going on.
Yes.
Some of the Republican House members and Senate members have filed suit. It is a minority number of them that have filed suit. And it's my recommendation just to let that litigation proceed and let the courts decide whether or not there is an overreach of rights. The municipal league, to my knowledge, has not reached out and requested that we endorse a resolution such as this. And so, my recommendation would take no action on this matter of this kind.
Counsel, did you have anything to add to or questions or?
I would just ask one question, Mr. Hamby, because we've presented this resolution to the municipal league and asked their opinion.
I already have a reading of the law. It's my understanding, Mr. Arnold, you have some discussion with others. I think I read it. Was the link that you had on your site, the one where I clicked on it, I couldn't access it. I don't know whether they pulled it down or not. One of the senators was discussing with the municipal league this particular resolution, if I understand correctly.
I'm not, I can't answer that, unfortunately.
On your side, you just said, "Watch this video."
On my site?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, I remember that. Yes, the video, you can click on it. I'm sorry. Yeah, I sent a link, yes, I see.
But I was trying to access that link. You cannot put in phone calls, but I have my secret return call app.
Okay.
So, certainly, I have no doubt the municipal league sends their recommendations all the time to ask us to draw a fair amount of support, so... You know, we got a phone call in, and I'll ask.
Also, how many members do you have, you know, supporting your cause?
Well, I actually am a member of a group called Reopen Arkansas, and it's about 5,000 plus strong.
I also want to like you're in Greenwood.
And I've got a petition that several have signed. We had less than a week's time, but we kind of organized it less than a week ago, but we have several names addressed and some numbers of people that support it.
And you involve our, you got like 30 or 40 or?
On the petition?
Yeah.
On the petition, I'm not exactly sure. I still have people bringing them in to me as I was coming, so I haven't had a chance to count them. But I know, I just know who I speak to every single day. It's just, it's just everyone I come in contact, and the people that are helping me with this cause, everyone says the same thing. Everyone's definitely tired of this. It's not that we're trying to be uncaring and that we don't care. We just think it's time to move on. We're kind of stalled, and we need to move on. And we need to let our representatives represent us, and they need to call a special session and let us be heard. Because I just know, I know as a mom and a business owner in life, and being out in the community, what I'm hearing. Now, a lot of people are afraid to speak up, because it is such a touchy, you know, subject, and I understand that. I think if you, if you speak out like I am, then I don't care about people, and that's not true at all. You know, my daughter went into the Air Force, and we didn't get to attend her graduation because of all of this. I didn't get to hug her or even graduate her or point ceremony. My business was shut down for almost a month. I'm sorry. So, it has affected me. And I know that this whole pandemic and COVID has affected everyone in different ways. And it's not that I don't care about those people, but I just know across the board, when I talk to people every single day, I know what they're saying to me, I know what they're saying to my friends and the people that have trained in this cause. And I think, you know, it was scary for me to stand up and say it, because you don't always get a good reaction for that. But I have four children, I'm a business owner here, and I care very much for people. But I also care about our businesses, I care about our children, I care about our community, I care about healthcare, I care about our elderly who are being isolated right now. And I think those are all important issues, and to me, all as important as the COVID crisis is. I think all of us, we have to look at everything as a whole and not just hyper-focus on COVID, because there's other issues going on as a result of this state of emergency.
I back Daniel's recommendation of the... Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Hamby's done that. We'll wait on that, or I'm sure...
You know, I'd just say, too, to you, Angela, that it takes a lot of courage to stand up and do what you're doing, and I appreciate that, and I think there's a lot of people that agree with exactly what you're saying. What power we have to change it, I don't know what that is. I mean, you know, I think it's Mr. Hamby's referring. If, if a lot of cities in Arkansas can collectively get to the governor, then maybe we could change some.
Right, and just, and know that that's exactly what I'm doing here tonight. I know that maybe there's, maybe there's nothing on, in the big picture that I can do personally, but if we can, if I can do this, and it inspires other communities to do it and other communities to stand up and do it also, then the governor hopefully will eventually say, "Yeah, we need to, we need to vote on this. We need to, we need to listen to people."
I think we need to give it time from the municipal league. You know, when this first started, you had the cities that tried to mandate masks before the state had mandated masks, and that got squashed pretty quickly, because, you know, we can't do something outside the bounds of the state law.
Right.
You know, I think giving the municipal league an opportunity to answer us is probably the right thing to do right now, to figure out our best approach.
I just believe that, you know, that's what we're here for. You know, we provide this forum for the voices to be heard, no matter, you know, on what side. And we should, and by doing that, you know, we have a good and popular debate about it. And I think, you know, this is a good step, and I appreciate you coming forward to it.
Anyone else? I would say, too, if I didn't say a while ago, Ms. Neese came to visit me last week, I guess it was, and we had a very good, productive meeting, invited her to come and make sure she knew how we had the seating arrangements and that sort of thing. So, thank you for coming, Sharon. We'll follow up for sure. Next on the list is Ms. Cosson. Say your name and address, then?
Yes, Michelle Cosson, 3108, where are the words? Andrew, but... So, I'm joining Angela tonight in voicing along the same lines. What I appreciated about the beginning of this meeting is we talked about Reverend Miller, we talked about he's appreciative that we have this opportunity for representation, and that's exactly what we're asking for. So, as much as I love Mayor Panslow, he can't be the only voice for our community. He needs the support of you guys. He needs, he needs the council to stand up and to be able to maybe check him occasionally, encourage him occasionally, correct him occasionally, et cetera. And that's what we're asking for on a state level. So, in March, when coronavirus became more widespread, so much was unknown about its whole consequences, the modes of transmission and its virulence. It was prudent at the time to be able to assimilate information very quickly and to be able to make act decisions quickly and definitively for the protection of our state. It was considered a state of emergency. Presently, however, nearly seven months later, after the initial onset of the state of emergency and almost one year after the initial cases of this particular version of coronavirus were retroactively identified in the United States, the global scientific community has learned much about the virus. We're no longer battling and our enemy. We're no longer need the unilateral, immediate decision-making that the state of emergency calls for. It is time to return to our democratic form of government, which allows for collaboration, discussion, debate, and above all, government with representation. So, why is this even important in Greenwood? Why are Angela and I here? Why did we organize a group of people to sign petitions to bring it to you? Initially, the consequences many people feared most were of immediate health concerns, perhaps even loss of life. Now, seven months later, the consequences many people fear most are non-health related. We are no longer wrought with a vision of a one-dimensional world focused solely on disease avoidance. As a business owner myself, I fear losing my ability to support my family and the employees' families that work for me because of restrictive mandates and limits. I fear the same for the dentists in our community, restaurant owners, optometrists, gym owners, all other small businesses in our community who have been and continue to struggle under the current regulations. As a mom of four kids, I fear for the loss of my children's educational and extracurricular opportunities, for the opportunity for consistent educational experience, for their childhood experiences, and for their social and emotional development. As a health advocate and coach, I fear for the emotional and physical health consequences from loss of income, anxiety, increases in domestic violence and trauma within homes, increased illegal drug use, isolation, and depression. All of these fears and many other consequences secondary to our radically altered lives are a reality in our community. The long-term plan for living with coronavirus isn't solely about mitigating the physical and medical issues related to the virus. The governor's goal was to slow the spread of the virus so as not to overwhelm our medical facilities and to be able to make more educated decisions as more was learned about the virus. Those conditions for living under a state of emergency have been met. It is time to end the state of emergency. It is time to return to a democratic form of government in Arkansas, rather than continuing under a dictatorship state with eyes only for disease avoidance and little regard for the economic, educational, social, emotional, and civil liberty considerations. This proposal simply asks you, our local elected officials, to take a stand for Greenwood's citizens. It states that you support the governor in ending the perpetual state of emergency and calling a special session of our state legislature. This would allow those men and women to fulfill their job duties and represent their constituents in making decisions as we proceed in supporting the future well-being of our fine town and state in the presence of this virus. We are asking to have a voice for democratic freedom. We are asking to restore government with representation. Will you help us do that?
Thank you. Comments or questions, counsel? Thank you.
And can I say, the number was 160. That we got it there about five days.
160?
160, and we're...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the list is Heather Talent. Am I saying that right? Heather? Is it Talent?
Talent, yes.
Talent?
Talent.
Sorry. Just give us your name and address, please.
Heather Talent, 815 W Baltimore, Greenwood, of course. Hi, Greenwood. My name is Heather. Some of you may know my name, but you don't know my story. Everywhere I go, I mask to tell my story. Sometimes I'm not wearing a mask. I wear a mask at work and in force, too, because I have to. I've never seen a therapist, and I go to God for every, every one of my problems. Things happened when I was younger, and I experienced trauma, so I'm speaking out for sex trafficking victims tonight. Speaking out for those that are not speaking out because they're afraid as well. There's a lot more to be said, and this affects all of us. This affects our children, and it is scaring our children. I believe in faith over fear, every time. And sometimes in life, it's a test of faith, a true test of faith, whether you choose to walk in faith or you choose to walk in fear. I choose to walk in faith, and I'm speaking out because I'm questioned everywhere I go and I'm discriminated against because I don't have something on my face. People talk about me, and they point at me, and they count me like I'm a number, but I'm speaking for all the people that are more than a number. They have a personal reason, and I don't feel like we should have to share that with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Magnus has already spoken. Ms. Tammy Jones?
Good evening.
No, you're fine. Just name and address, so we got it on record.
My name is Tammy Jones. I live at 810 Del Road, here in Greenwood. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the fact that I'm here now, ready to share that everyone has a voice, and we come here to all share the work. So, I'm your advocate for mask for advocates for climate illness, including individuals. The CDC states mask for an additional step to help strengthen COVID-19 when combined with everyday limited actions and social distancing of COVID-19. Ask your male patient fighting for care or either diagnosis, why mask important? You will hear, it is a matter of mind. Ask a child or a teen that has a wheelchair with a feeding tube that still fights for the rights of others to find help. You will hear, it's a matter of mind. Then you complain that a right should be taken away. My question is, are they really? Because the definition for rights is that which is morally correct just for on the list. We are given choices. We are not called that, we can't do it, or we can do it, because it's our choice. We have our choices, yet their consequences to those choices. I meant for a lot of teens and young adults and families, and, you know, that they have to help them, before you make the choice, make sure you're ready to face the consequences. So, there are gonna be consequences, negative or positive. Choose to wear a mask, there's positive consequence, you're welcome to shop wherever you want to go, and there's an open opportunity to invite them. If you choose, I'm sorry, if you choose to wear a shop, you're welcome, wear a mask, you are welcome to shop, and you may be protecting others. I'm speaking, like I said, in advocacy of the type of chronic ill patients and rare diseases. Law says if you choose to go eighty in a sixty mile speed zone, you have a consequence. If you follow the law, everything's good. If you choose not to follow the law, then you're going to get a ticket or negative consequence. So, it's all about our choice and our consequences, what we choose and what consequence follows it. If you choose not to wear a mask for you, think of others first. It is morally correct, just, and honorable. Remember, if wearing a mask assists in saving one life, it's worth it. And now I'd like to read a quote to you from one of our local representatives, Dr. Lee Johnson. Dr. Lee Johnson has been amazingly helpful in the rare disease community here in our area, and he's also helping with a lot of other things that are going to help many, many patients in a state of Arkansas. So, this is Dr. Lee's statement. He couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to read it for him. Mask is an important tool in reducing the spread of COVID-19. Masks effectively reduce the drop of transmission of all respiratory illnesses. The coronavirus is no exception. Wearing a mask is a simple courtesy to others such as covering your mouth when you sneeze or cough. In an effort to reduce the burden of our healthcare system, it is my hope that we can work together to limit the spread of COVID-19 in our community by wearing masks when we cannot socially distance, maintain social distancing, and washing our hands frequently. Thank you for giving the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I had, was to sign up to speak this evening, and we'll move on in the agenda. And again, as we've stated, Mr. Candy will be waiting on a reporter, call that from the newsroom, and we'll make that known as soon as we hear something back. Thank you, thank you all. Advice report, Mr. Tom Marsh.
Okay, most of everybody should have it on their tablets. Because I'm not, based on how we have it arranged, I'm not projecting it for you on the screen. But I do want you to know that for the month of September, looking at the COVID-19 presentation first, our fiscal summary of the sales and use tax, we still incurred an increase in the city sales and use tax. It was up cumulatively fifteen point six percent. The amount that we had month over September month was sixteen point five percent, so it is down over twenty percent that we were experiencing in the last three months of the last quarter. What we're doing now is we're saying that at a twenty percent reduction over the next three months, if that were to happen, you would still double your budgeted revenues right now to six point six eight percent, which is twice what our normal run rate of increased revenue would be. So, six point six eight percent is if we have a twenty percent reduction in the current city sales use tax. I doubt if that's going to happen. Fort Smith hasn't realized that, they're experiencing increases as well. So, I'm still saying that it's presenting a very interesting budget challenge because I have to project revenues, and the revenues are projected based on, you normally say we budget flat, but this is an anomaly year, and I don't think budgeting at about a fifteen percent cliff next year is reasonable. I think we will start seeing these numbers drop in the next quarter, back down to a more reasonable level, which reflects the city sales and use tax being generated from online sales. So, we're looking at probably more in the area of about a ninety percent increase, which triples our normal run rate of increase. So, budget-wise, I'm going to advocate that we most likely not budget on a flat basis next year, but I would do budget an increase, and I will present that at the budget study sessions, and I'll show you my support. County sales tax went up eight point nine seven percent or went under nine percent for September, same year, September of two thousand nineteen. Cumulative, cumulative, it is a four point eight percent increase for the year run rate.
They're actually outside, the doors keep opening.
Yeah. In the past, we were projecting what the next three months average would have to drop in order for us to meet budget, and we had last month presented to you an eight percent drop would generate roughly a flat budget. We would actually meet budget. However, now I'm projecting that eight percent drop would actually give you a one point six percent growth in county sales tax. So, as a comparative, the city of Fort Smith just released their numbers for the same time period that we're presenting tonight. They in county sales tax are at about the same rate, they're a four point eight five percent growth cumulative, and we're four point eight percent. So, it seems like neighboring communities are experiencing the same kind of rate in the county sales tax numbers. Just to give you a comparison, two thousand nineteen, at this very same time, nine months into the year, we were at a one percent increase in county sales tax. Advertising and promotion, you'll see the graph on that. I think as we were talking about, I heard several times today, somebody mentioned flattening the curve. As I predicted, the curve would start declining. Our growth that we saw run up in the A and P, which was your prepared food tax, has been brought back down to budget levels, and that's where we expected to probably run for the rest of the year. You might see a little pickup in the next couple of months, but I believe that right now we're averaging, if you were to count the growth of the growth, we're right at about eleven percent increase for the year. But I do see it flattening, and that's primarily because the opportunities for dining options in the surrounding communities have opened up a little more, and people have opted for those versus coming into Greenwood and just eating on our fast food. But we did have that nice spike, and for the year, we're running up just slightly under eleven percent. There's two, three more graphs that I want to point out. The city sales tax graph between two thousand nineteen and two thousand and twenty, what you're seeing is a linear presentation there where the lines are going. I think she's gonna, are you showing how to make it?
Yeah.
I noticed they have it tilted around. They're all doing that because it's not projected on their screens, are they?
Well, it turns.
I think it's user error.
ID ten tier.
I can turn my head and figure that out.
There you go. The linear graph is showing that there's a widening between the sales tax gap in the county and the city. That type of a graph is what's going to be used to support my projections for budget for two thousand and twenty-one, and the need to actually project not flat, but to do a budget based on some percentage of increase. I'm not going to advocate it to fifteen percent that we're running, but I am showing you that the linear presentation is showing a growth, and that growth is going to be supported primarily through the next three months as well. I don't see it dropping below the current budget numbers that we have. That would be twenty percent drop over the next three months in order for us to say, project flat. County sales tax would have to drop over eight percent in order for us to say we're going to budget flat. We're going to have probably a recommendation on that projection for next year also to be a growth number, which will help all the operating departments that utilize the county sales tax. You still see the same thing in the red and blue linear lines. You see the separation between the two thousand and nineteen numbers and the growth of the two thousand and twenty numbers as it projects forward. Revenue and expense trends, what I'm showing you there on the next graph is the two thousand nineteen revenues versus two thousand and twenty, and then the expenses versus two thousand and twenty. I also gave you a linear projection there, and you do see that the revenues are growing this year anyway, at a greater pace than the expenses are growing. That linear presentation is very important because what you're going to see on the last slide is the revenue and expense analytics, which shows you by month whether our revenues were above what we did last year at this time or below, and you'll see the total over on the far right. We have a revenue growth in two thousand and twenty of seven point two percent, but we have an expense growth of eight point eight percent. You see, we're ten million in expenses through the first nine months. That should not scare you, it doesn't scare me, only because your budget that you projected, the revenue growth was less than one percent in our budget, and we're up seven point two. And then you look at the expense side, right now, for the twelve-month period, we were supposed to be somewhere slightly under twelve percent in our expenses, and we're right at eight point eight percent. Most of that is some delayed capital projects. When you look at the capital projects, we have spent of that number of expense, we've spent thirty-four point five percent of our capital money in nine months. It's less than half of what we projected. Remember, we put a slowdown on our spend due to the COVID. We decided that we were not going to spend on non-critical infrastructure needs, but what you did see in one month is a nine point six percent increase in the capital spend between last month and this month. That number increased just slightly over nine and a half percent. Good news is on our cash side, we have a net, we still have a net increase in our cash, our cash flow at five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, so there's a million dollars being tucked away in our cash. We did experience though a net decrease for the month of September as certain projects are now starting to happen, and there's some capital purchases being made. Most of that's coming on the capital side. And I think, because of our heavy schedule, if there's any questions that you have on some of the numbers that you're seeing in the actual reports, we're more than happy to entertain them. And I will give you an update on the audit. The audit is wrapping up, legislative audit is wrapping up, they will be bringing our documents back Wednesday, and the water sewer audit is underway right now as well. They're waiting on some of the documents that are being returned. Remember, the audit hour is being done offsite, it's not being done here, so that's why our documents are delaying this process a little bit. That's about it.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the audience know that I wasn't making fun or laughing at Tom. Not only am I not tech savvy, I can't even keep the thing cropped up. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Marsh. Appreciate that.
I just, again, when you're saying that our delay expenses, you know, were projected, you said overall it should be increased like about eight percent, is that what you were saying?
Right now, on that last slide of the COVID one, you'll see that our current expenses this year over last year are up eight point eight percent. However, if you go back to the budget, you would see that we projected for the whole year about a twelve percent, a little over twelve percent increase in our expenses, and we projected our revenues, because we were going to take about two and a half million dollars out of our funds, we actually have tucked away half a million dollars in our funds right now. So, the revenues are what's grew at a faster pace than what we thought, mostly city sales and use taxes is the reason why. City and county dropped more money into that. We had budgeted about a one percent increase in the revenue and about a twelve percent increase in expenses. So, in other words, you're doing very well, an extra hundred. I would anticipate that next year's budget will show a lot of carryover, capital investments coming forth. A lot of those are just now in the planning stages and getting started.
Thank you, sir. Anything else for Mr. Don?
I just think that, yeah, we kind of dipped in, you know, when you said like our reserves were to meet the increase in expenses, you know, will this be a ability to kind of build back up our reserves and whatever, you know, kind of like that rainy day fund or whatever?
That is dependent upon the projects that are going to be coming in that next budget. When all the departments submit their budgets, their one, three, and five-year plan or capital plan is where I have to determine, is there going to be future resources in order to handle that? And a lot of those carryover costs and carryover expenditures are going to impact what we have in reserves. One of the things that we're looking at the Depository Committee is how to invest what we consider to be idle cash, and idle cash doesn't mean it's not committed cash, it means it's future committed cash, like three to five years from now. So, if we've got money tucked away, that's not earning, we're not using the money to its fullest potential to earn, we're going to be reinvesting that in order to generate some contingency funds. Right now, we don't have a good source of contingencies. We're going to be looking to invest some of the idle cash right now. You know, we've got twelve million dollars in the bank right now, where obviously, a lot of that money isn't going to be committed for another three years. We need to take that money and make it work better for us in password savings interest. And that is something we were going to do this year. COVID put a stop to that because the markets went crazy, we didn't know whether we were going to need to tap into those funds, but it is on our plate right now to look at. We have a consultant investor bank that's looking at giving us some advice on what the markets are doing, so we've entertained, earmarked a certain portion out of each department's funds that we consider to be not immediately necessary to be used, that we can invest. Now, don't panic, we can pull that money back if we need it at any time. I mean, it's not like we lock it in and we lose money on the deal. We need the money, we can pull it back. It'll be a treasury mess, so.
Definitely nice words before we go, so it's a good one. Okay, anything else, panel? Thank you, sir. Agenda additions? We're all in. Full business, number one, planning department orders to re-sell property six well east Knoxville from R1 to R2. Second reading, Mr. Bill?
Mayor Council, the first item here gives a second reading to a proposal to re-sell the property six well east Knoxville from R1 to R2. Person that is requesting this has a want to build duplexes on that property, three And the planning commission forward this, approve the request to come in front of the council, and so, if you have any questions about...
Sonny, you have something to show us what's being proposed there?
Yes, I do. I'll put it in front of you. You're looking at Knoxville on the lower part. You've got a series of pre-duplexes with a center parking lot.
It's eight foot stuff back on the back of the lot.
Yeah. Set back for all within the, within the perimeter of the zoning. You've got two, two-bedroom apartments and then, you've got, this two fight up here is two fifth rooms and leave on each side, or three bedrooms.
What size is that?
Uh, it's an oversized lot.
It's not, it's not one of those one acre, actually?
No. This is Knoxville Street?
You know where it is.
How many parking lots do you have? Five. Well, six, 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 no, twelve. How many bedrooms do you have? We've got two, these are three bedrooms. These are three bedrooms and these are two bedrooms. Something I know, we've done this in several places over there. It's funny, you should never consider the amount of traffic you put on the road.
Yes.
That's quite a few cars in an already congested area. To be honest with you, the Planning Commission was not overjoyed with the proposal. But because of the change in the state laws, it's restricted us on being able to request or require certain things that we used to be able to. And so that's the reason. I mean, like I said, the Planning Commission approved the zoning to come to you guys. And we couldn't go in there and say, this is what we want there. And my concept of an R5 was to be able to go to the older neighborhoods and put a duplex in there and people not know it's there. That's, the people will know that that's there.
There's not many other structures like that.
Frankly aware of that.
There's not many other structures in the neighborhood like that.
No. We have some duplexes in that area. But they're hidden there, you know, they're, they follow the, the R5 context.
That looks a lot like those on the senior and doggy.
This is similar to the apartments over nearby Hall Homes. You know, the Planning Commission couldn't deny the request, but the council can.
Just a little bit of a little bit of a follow-up. Do you want to build a house anymore and stuff?
Well, I'm all for, you know, I think a duplex or whatever, that kind of almost, there's like a home there. You know, if you got by, it was like a house. And I've seen several of those when I was on the Planning Commission. And so like I said, this one definitely, you know, it's not just a house or, you know, it's really...
A parking lot.
Yeah, that was like a parking lot.
Looking at what I'm looking at, it's identical. Yeah. Identical. I mean, it's not...
I mean, I don't get it.
I mean...
Just a, just a number five.
Question that, this is some of the elevations. Hey, we, we would like to require covered parking at the metal, you know, carport, something like that. Garages would be required. But these, these are not.
Well, I think that was to me the purpose of it. Why the R5, going to the R5 was to get empty lots that, you know, might never get built, you know, to do like a kind of a garden home variety duplex or something like that.
Or a house instead of a covered parking lot.
Right. So this is probably...
Elevation just a third.
Something I should know after all these years. But I suppose to control the type of building that's being built somewhere, the look, the colors, the style, all that, can that only be done in a historical district?
Obviously so. Daniel, you know, last year, the Arkansas Legislature threw us an curve. It took the ability of the planning and building departments to require the type of roof that you put on a house, the siding, you know, you could have a, an area with brick hump in there and somebody comes along and wants to build a hump, put sheet iron on there. And nothing we can do better. This is caused by a...
But in a historical district, you can.
I think that goes in a fit. I'm not sure.
Because they then can dictate what kind of shingles, what color the paint is.
Whether you can water it or add oil to it or whatever. There's a lot of restrictions to it. And I think that's federal.
In the old town, this was just...
Are you saying this was a law or was this a, you know?
The state passed a law last year. I lobbied against it. I tried to get the, you know, every planning department in the city and the state to go against it. And the municipal league just backed up and wouldn't commit one way or the other. And, you know, I talked to Dr. Lee, I talked to Matt Pitts. Everybody agreed that it's a bad law. But nobody wanted to stand up against it because it felt like they would lose more in the future if they stood up against it. Now, crazy, but that's the reasoning that they gave, gave me. And, you know, I went to Low Rock. I talked to General Lon Franklin. I talked to, you know, everybody at municipal league, the Arkansas Planning Association. And everybody was against it but the politicians. It was because of the lobby of the home builders was so strong.
Well, you talk about the law that basically gave it all so good regulation.
It didn't, it didn't do that, Tim, but it hamstrung us on us requiring certain, certain things. You know, we used to have a, you know, regulations as far as garages, accessory building garages, that it had to meet the architectural character of the house. That really kind of killed that. There's a, now, the thing that I found in the law that I don't think that they, they had picked up on, the law stated that it applied only to new, new ground. But we don't like new ground. I mean, what we annexed will have new ground. But our old ground, you know, we can still hold their feet to the fire on some of the things in our, on the old ground. But when we annex, the new properties don't come in and it's going to have, these laws are going to take effect on those. So, you know, it's, we're kind of walking a thin line on some of these things. And hopefully, we can, we can continue to build the type of structures in Greenwood that people want to see them. I said the R5, like I told you a little later, my concept of an R5 was to be able to put a duplex on an older part of the city and not really be able to tell it's a duplex.
There is a little bit of movement within municipal league this now, this next session to go back to that and try to get, get some of that back to...
I haven't heard. And that's good.
Now, I would encourage you to reach out to your folks, the Dr. Johnson and...
You got to see, I mean, I need your help.
Because this is the kind of example of what we lost.
Yeah, like I said, they all agree that it's a bad law, but they just, you know, just wanted to push it and bust the law.
Senator Pitts is continually asking me what we need. And I think this is one of the things we need. So whoever, someone came to the planning and wanted to submit a rezoning request from R1 to R5. That's what this is about, right?
Yes. And we looked at it. The area is designated that it was available for R5. And so that's what they had to look at. They, like I said, they certainly weren't happy with what they were showing there. If they did, if there was anything they could do. So they said, you know, pass it on to the council. The council can look at this and they can decide not to rezone that at this time and not have anything to do with the design or anything else. Just that, no, we don't want to rezon this at this time.
So let, no, Mr. Terry said we shouldn't just blanket R5 or anything a few months back. You probably knew who he was talking about there.
You're right.
Let, no, Mr. Terry that says we can't, so let's not blanket everything R5.
And we tried, I could, like you said.
Well, we sure did. And so now we're in a pickle because we...
No, we've got, we've got movement, way to move on this. And that's why I'm...
You want us to say no because y'all did both.
Well, we did what we had to according to law. And I'm telling you that what you can do according to law. If somebody comes in and asks for a variance for what we... For example, we had a lady come in out at Freeport that wanted to put a metal carport in front of her garage on her driveway and extend it out to about 10 foot from the, from the street. Well, knowing that that goes against every one of our variances, she still was legally able to apply for a variance. And I, you know, I kind of tell them upfront, I can't speak for the planning commission, but I cannot see them passing this. But she wanted to go ahead with it. We went in front of the planning commission. The planning commission looked at it and said, we're not going to grant that variance. And so we, like I said, we have to go through these, these processes. And it's just like this gentleman. He wanted to come in, he wanted to rezone that to R5. And here's what he wanted to do. Well, you know, the question in front of the planning commission was the zoning, not the conceptual drawing or anything else.
I'm just saying that we just want to hit it case by case to all this rezoning instead of blanking all this areas R5, all this areas R5.
Tim, that, we haven't blanked it. What we're saying is, no, no, let me just say, we've got these areas in the old part of town that says only, only in these areas would be available for an R5. Only in there. But it's on a case by case basis. We can't, it's not saying that anybody that comes down here in the Villadish and wants to rezone something to R5, they, they're going to get an R5 rezon.
Well, it was available in this area the reason they can't do it.
Yes.
Is the fact that you have people in opposition?
And we held a, we held a public meeting on it with the planning department. I sent out the letters and we had one gentleman that showed up and after he looked at it and he said, well, it really doesn't make, make him any difference. I know the mayor has a, somebody that he knows that rents in that area that was against it. But he never, he didn't come to the meeting or he hadn't called me or anything else. So, but I think that if they saw the proposed development, they would be more, come out against it.
Do we have the ability to, you know, like Tim said, your own copy, but to make up, I'm saying either a legal size or a letter-sized, you know, copy of, you know, the drawing that you have? You know, I mean, I would always like to have, you know, something kind of visual to look at myself. You know, do we have that ability to...
Well, I do, like I said, this, this one here, it was a... We were hitting on this. I mean, the planning commission saw it and, you know, really the developer doesn't have to show you them. They can say, I don't want to rezone, you know, it's a R5. I want a few duplexes here. And we can't say, well, what kind of duplexes? What do you want, you know? What are you going to do about it and things like this? We really don't have that ability to question if this guy did bring this in.
It seems crazy to me that we would, the city, the planning commission, the council, any of us would be asked to make a decision like that not knowing what's going on.
Some of the wire, all that.
You said, I'm going to rezone this to this commercial industrial, whatever. We just want, said, well, okay. And somebody puts a dynamite factory in next door. I mean, seems like people want to know that on the front end. Well, it looks like the name of the Motel 6. Big old room. That's just, I mean, that's supposed to... People have in town a brewery.
And not to...
Then with the franchise.
Yeah. Not till Mr. Ron Tonlin under the bus. But he will, he will be here Thursday night for another issue and extension study session, as you know. So that'd be a perfect opportunity to ask him some of these questions regarding that, that particular... I mean, I'm not saying, Sonny's not saying like he is. I'm saying he can be a man from municipal league will be here get a little insight on that.
Town, is that?
Six o'clock. I don't think that's a resolution you should put forward to that you recommend our, our, you know, reconsider that.
I'm assuming this developer I can say. I don't know. I don't want to be more pushy. I got a good mind just to put it on for, to make a motion just because of the circus going on. What is the desire of council?
Desire would be to go to two.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you.
Mayor? Yes, sir. This trivial triviality here. That's already been on a first reading. And we have to go through the process. You do something to a second reading in your time.
Can you table it forever?
Table it, yeah. Well, but there's no motion. I mean, you, you didn't ask for a motion for a second reading and nobody answered.
Do I want to table the death warrant?
I mean, you can table it. You don't have a motion and it just got died.
So it's just dead.
How long will it be brought back to the planning commission to go through the whole bill? How long?
So you can break back every time, Manny?
He wrote?
I mean, developer, we can go back and ask for... Every time with a, with a...
Mike, not that I know of. I mean, he couldn't come back with the same, with the same plan. I mean, he could, you know, he would have reached a bit and, and... But I said, if it's, if it does not, it is. I'm Mr. Powell's gentleman too.
Number two is the State Attorney, 2021 bill. It's not like I was replying this and I said loud this morning. I thought that was funny. It's no ordinance.
This is not the pass every October. I usually rely on it, but this year we don't. And so we just need to, 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 to go along and go through the whole process. Careful, file, uh, for the other person?
Yeah, I remember I just received a letter from Sharon Brooks today asking for it. Sure to get it from her.
Motion to put this on the song by first reading title.
Second.
Motion second, put on what he said.
West Terry?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Tapp, Powell?
Yes.
Tinter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Major?
Yes.
And ordinance is testing a five mill tax on real and personal property and the permanent tenants of the city of Greenwood, Arkansas for the year 2021, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Make the most, fill the rules, let's say, for second. Motion second.
West Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Tinter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Is it Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Motion second to adopt.
West Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Tinter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Dan?
Motion that emergency law.
Man, y'all did that beautifully.
That was hard. And motion second to that emergency law.
West Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Tinter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yeah.
Major?
Thank you. Number three is the State Park Treasurer and you at least tax law report.
Well, this is done every year. I think I gave y'all a copy of it. Isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. And it's just very simple. We're doing this every year as a responsible person. It's in compliance with the, because the law on the lease tax law. it's in compliance with it, because the bond, the lease tax law, so. Same thing is, I think it's going to be the last year I'll do this, and after the traffic bond, um, refunding or whatever happens, so, uh, the outstanding balance as of today, I called and confirmed, is one million hundred forty-five thousand. And even though the bond is set to mature until the first twenty-third year, it's kind of fast. Anyways, uh, one of Jones today, I called her, we're all in compliance, things going on. Let's do it. Any questions?
Do you need a motion to accept a report?
No, I just have to have it on work, too. I did.
And upon one thing, you asked you all that bond, you want the report that you just made? When we first started talking about issuing the refunding and doing the bonds of the traffic relief, you're at two point six million is what we're looking for, for the refund. The increase that you're seeing in the city sales and use tax that has been contributing plus the three percent to the bond itself to pay down the bond, caused that bond's principal balance plus interest to be one point nine.
To drop three hundred thousand dollars. What was the time period between when we were doing?
October, remember last year, somewhere in there is when we first started talking about it. Now, we did, uh, in the two point six million that we put out there, that was a little overstated for, we had a little cushion there in case there was some additional costs, some refunding, but, um, the increase in city sales and use taxes, where did it impacted your payoff on that? So what's going to end up happening, and you'll hear this at the special meeting, is that the monies that we save from that refunding drop right back into the traffic relief project to contribute to the five million that we need, you know, report beyond the portion.
At August, it was outstanding dollars, about two million sixty-five thousand. And already one point nine, it's about.
Love sales tax.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, planning again, file ordinance, revealing ordinance number ten dash thirteen, establishing building permit, these scheduled for three years.
Mayor, Councilman, this here, uh, you have in front of you, fellow ordinance, uh, revealing the ordinance ten thirty and all of their ordinance in conflict or therewith with establishing fee for plumbing, electrical construction, blasting, special haul-in, and cancel, demolition, and for other purposes. These, these are consolidated, uh, scheduled fees that, uh, have long been needing to be updated. Seth Merrill, Seth, he's up here. Uh, for you guys that haven't, uh, met Seth, this is Seth Merrill. He took over from Don and is doing a, a super job. One of his first, uh, uh, projects was to go through these scheduled fees and compare them to, uh, areas around us, Fort Smith basically, and some others. They look at them and make sure that we were in line. If not, we were out of line. And so therefore, we, we don't have to listen to this tired story that, uh, it's, uh, cheaper to build in Fort Smith than it is in Greenwood. And Seth, through his, uh, studies, found out that that was not true to begin with. But Seth is here, he, he did all this work, did an excellent job of it, super, uh, uh, super job on it. And, uh, he's doing a great job with our builders, and he's working hard on his certifications, getting those all, uh, in line. So if you have any questions, he is here to answer them. Like I said, he put this totally together, so he is the expert on it, not me.
So what we're telling you, what are we replacing it with?
We're replacing it with the soft consolidated fees on it, that's in there.
The highlighted part?
The highlighted part is showing you what has changed.
Okay.
Yeah, for example, in the original ten thirteen, you had a swimming pool, a swimming pool fee of eight dollars for electrical, so all, all especially electrical whenever there's a swimming pool destruction. So that's going to change. Cost of trucks, twenty-five dollars for, and then for the first thousand, five dollars, additional thousand, fashion era, uh, sidewalk fee is going to change. All residential new destruction, ten dollars. All residential remodel additions, ten improvements, fifty dollars. Commercial sidewalk fee, it's standardized from the existing that is reflected on, on this ordinance. Try to simplify the plumbing permit process. It was itemized, fee-based, now all, now it's more or less open. I know they're based off three dollars. It's a two to three dollar increase, for the most part, on average. Um, we do get specific whenever we go to services, water service place, new, the R and Z valves, so forth. Uh, electrical permit fee, it was primarily based off number circuits. Well, if you don't have any low capitalization, you know, can't get the correct, accurate count on your circuits. So I was going to replace that with the same thing, number of openings, simplify the process. Uh, same thing with the HVAC. I did have a change with the HVAC, uh, replacement of, uh, package system, heat pump and so forth. And that's at the very bottom of the last page. And condensing unit replaced fifty dollars, heating units fifty dollars, the package system fifty-five, and the complete system's eighty-five. And that's, that's based off the municipality's these schedules around. Hopefully this process will simplify, it will be out, you know, especially on my, my end of it. We do have new permitting software program that we're utilizing. So we went live with that about two months ago. And so I'm just trying to simplify that process, create a line it, and then I'm bouncing back and forth between that and field and office. So. We're going to have any questions on that?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure, I'm just saying, but on the, on the very first part, on that exhibit A, where it says building, building permit fee schedule, thirty thousand per square foot.
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
See, that's based on.
Square foot, or is that eight dollars per square foot?
So that's, that's a cost of valuation. So your, your square foot, eight dollars per foot, and that's, that's per ICC that has one construction there. On that valuation, then you go to cost of construction for your residential. Okay, so that's your base cost of construction. And then the valuation is fifty-five hundred, fifteen dollars, and so forth. Does that make any sense? So that's your price, your price per, your price per square foot is based off the ICC, so that's what we go off of.
Absolutely.
And then off that, cost per foot is our cost of construction, valuation. So that's going to be the permit amount.
Okay. Now, I guess the other thing I was wondering, you know, is, is, you know, it says we don't, uh, ordinance funding exists for swimming pool construction?
Yeah, I can't find the family. There is, there is an ordinance for swimming pool destruction for a swimming pool, eight dollars. And that should just be especially the swimming pool.
And would, would that not fit under this, where it says residential construction, you know, just like, along with like a accessory building, or have this additional, uh, building, you know, on your property?
No, it's a different cost of valuation.
Okay, does anybody remember, we had this huge debate that went on through several months about swimming pools? Several years ago.
Was it about regarding the fences, was supposed to be something around?
I think it was probably mostly about fences.
That's what I was told.
Jerry Smith didn't want to build a fence. There wasn't swimming pool ordinance at the time?
It was repealed. I mean, I doubt, well, why did you, or did some of them repeal? I spent plenty of time reading that stuff, and it's overwhelming that.
Yeah, the, the, Jerry Smith, and it was, she had a swimming pool next to the lake, and they, they wanted to, uh, fence around the swimming pool, but not the lake. And, uh, I think that the ordinance was there for six, eight months, maybe a year, and then it was repealed.
Is that insurance bill over, insurance people want to watch out?
That's, that's kind of what it was.
They can go over your bills.
I don't know about this, but the, the title says, uh, fees for electrical plumbing and construction, blasting and special hauling, mechanical and demolition, permit. So where are the blasting, hauling, chemical, and demolition permits?
It's going to be on the second page, I'm sorry, the third page. The blasting permit and special hauling permit, that's all states the same. It's not highlighting. So that's, that's states the same, unless you have any changes, you can change. Highlighting what is, on the items that are going to be changed, just to simplify the process for the most part, and increase in fee.
Well, I guess for me, I was just kind of thinking that the, the swimming pool permit fee maybe should be at, at the bottom, you know, uh, after the storage tank, because kind of the way that's involved, maybe with like the blasting permit and the demolition and all that, that pertains to the swimming pool, not to, uh, you know, just the other fees or whatever, and that's some kind of service, a swimming pool.
Yeah, yeah.
You're talking swimming, swimming pool?
Swimming pool.
And so you.
So the blasting and hauling is specific to swimming pool?
No, it's not. So blasting, hauling, it's just a, has nothing to do with valuation, cost of trucks for swimming pool.
Well, if that's what I was saying, I was wondering if that, just swimming pool.
You got, you got tile for swimming pool, you got turn down for swimming pool.
But is a hundred dollar blasting permit, if you're building a swimming pool or if you're boiling up a tree?
That's blasting, you do whatever you want with blasting permit.
It's not specific.
It's not specific.
And that's what, but it looks like that way.
Right. I would say on that.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's like.
Blasting permit would be like if you were fracking for a, a water line or something like that.
Well, and that's why I was just saying that, that swimming pool, since it's involved, maybe just kind of be at the end of that storage now, so that.
Special hauling permit, that's my question, because I was actually going to ask about the street. And, uh, do we not have a, I know that, I know that, I've had this discussion before about hauling stuff, just having, you know, having a permit if you're building a lot of construction. You know, I could say for example, right out here, at the new little city they're building, I mean, I was a lot of trust that one time, you know, all the stuff coming through there, but I didn't know if that was, I would be wondering. The one out there, the one out there is off of the state highway somewhere, but the ones that cut through Meadowbrook.
Right, stuff like that.
Something like that. I didn't know. Those are the ones, first you got catch them.
Wow.
And that was part of the discussion. I think that originally originated from Deerwood.
It's over on Deerwood.
Hall and Rock, I believe, is how that whole came to the surface, if you will.
You know, the, the only time, place that I can remember that that was huge, was when they renewed the wealth up there past ten thousand, up on Mount Harmony. And, uh, of course, I think Stevens, they came to us and said, we're getting ready to do this, because, you know, those are the kind of companies you like to deal with. And so Don Keyes went out there and they showed us the route. And of course, coming down ten, there was nothing there. But when they turned off the Mount Harmony, he videoed all the way up to the, to the site. And then they got a permit and bonded what it would take to redo that road. And after they were through, they came and got done, and they went back up the same route. And they picked out some bottles that appeared, you know, at that. And so they were just charged for that, that type. But that's the last time that I remember somebody coming to us and saying, hey, I want a special hauling permit. Well, that's just because of zone, you know.
How does that pertain this hauling permit to, and that bonding roads to where birds digging out here by.
State highway. State highway.
But we can't, if we.
Now, he was running through, uh, Meadowbrook up to the Hill addition or something like that, you know, and, and I found out long after, uh, I don't know if it wasn't him, but if somebody else had ran a bunch, like three hundred loads of dirt up to the Hill addition when, uh, Christian would build this house up there. That should have been bonded, that should have been permitted. But like I said, it's, it's hard to find those things, just like somebody, uh, getting one of these storage rooms and having it brought in, put it back out. And then they're in and gone in an hour, you know, it's hard to catch those kinds of things. But it's hard to even move the target, you know, that's, that's the problem.
I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to warn, I mean, these guys committed a building permit, which I, I like, it's all good. I was just thinking about, well, that might be an opportunity for us to kind of detect what they're going to be, they're going to be hauling a bunch of stuff.
Well, I think you have a good, good person now. I mean, I'm not, I know now you're in a position to be able to know some of those things.
Well, you know what I'm saying, really, they were going to, well, we're going to build houses, we're going to, you know, house on side, you're going to call a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, so he, he mentioned, I think he said he bounced in between office and field, pretty much literally, but it's a good opportunity for him.
Why don't you put it more in your place? I'm just saying, I just. But again, if you, if you want us to address the swimming pool, if you want to put something in there that, that is a permit for a swimming pool, you know, we can put this on the first reading, and we can bring you back an amendment to test that, that addresses the swimming pool or anything else that you.
Well, you know, that swimming pool thing, my idea is, I mean, you've got swimming pool, and you've got people who do a swimming pool, a small house to go with.
Yeah.
You, you know what I'm saying? So I can see where he's coming from in that there, because you, you just go put a pool in there. I mean, you got this, but next thing you know, they just say, well, let's build a pool house, and then build a little deal over here, and then we'll electric and all that.
You know, the main thing on the pool, you know, is that we stress in the past, if somebody comes in and wants to build a pool, is we, we remind them of setbacks. We remind them to, you know, call before you dig. And then you got to get an electrical and plumbing permit, because we don't want you to electric, get your boat, you know, and that kind of pool. Come to the city before you build it up from the fire hydrant.
Well, I was just, why, why have a separate category? I feel like it was primarily, you know, like accessory building or additions or whatever, you know? I mean, it's an addition to your.
Part of the accessory building, it is based off a different cost of valuation. So this is a specific, just to the swimming pool, the cost of valuation.
I don't think, I don't think I would be like to, if that just moved down there on the bottom and stuff in there. But going back, well, like I said, you know, that special hauling permit, I think that's one time you brought up the fact that, you know, even Fort Smith, that they're doing major construction, and they're just, you know, muddying out the road or whatever, Fort Smith likes to, you know, get that, yeah, either quit or, or keep the roads clean, you know, something like that, you know? I think that's.
Well, we did a lot of that, uh, dentists, uh, crew out there, and they will call every once in a while, and they'll say, you know, so and so's, uh, building a house over here, it's raining, they're going in and out, we've got dirt all over the place, and I'll call them and they'll go out there and clean it up. So, you know, we work together with the street department on that, so.
What is that done now, our, our street department or the, uh, or the, by the enforcement?
No, the street department notifies us, and then I get a hold of the builder and tell them if they need to clean it up, you know, they'll send a crew out and do it.
I can't believe anybody's, can we use this hundred dollar permit to blast that one from both the technical bridge lines up there?
Sure.
Moving on. Moving on. Well, again, to me, I don't know, is, is that special hauling permit, you know, is that kind of in, in line with, uh, Fort Smith and everything? Because I mean, like you said, it just depends on that. If I'm just hauling one load, oh, no, I'm hauling, you know, fifty loads. That's a whole big difference there.
That was my point. I was just saying, you got somebody that's going to go up the Hill addition and just drops off thirty foot on one, and they're going to really bring it to grave. Well, they're going to be hauling only one load of dirt. So that's what I'm saying. But I think now, to the mayor's point, we have somebody that will pick up on that and want to say, oh, hey, you know, you may, you may need to get a permit for hauling or whatever, or get with Dennis. And, and because if they are hauling up Hill addition, I mean, that pit top road right there, that, that thing fall apart in a New York minute, if you get enough dump trucks up.
Yeah, indeed.
So I'm just, I mean, just saying, I think that, that was my point, I was just making sure that was kind of where that was at. And I don't know that, that there might not be a, a range of.
Yeah, of a range.
A range of, oh, well, we're going to haul two loads. Okay, well, it's this. But if you're going to haul three hundred, we'll hang them in.
Yeah.
You need to, or maybe we could, you know, just be something like that. Because many of them help me give the streets. I mean, I'm just saying, you just, you know.
Well, you know, the bridge there, I think was destroyed by those dump trucks coming through there and hitting that bridge over and over. And then where you turn up on the Hill addition, you remember we, we repaved that. And right after that was when that house was built up there, and all of a sudden we got weeping, just coming out of there. And I feel like that's, that was another cause of that, so.
You don't help with the name and color line of those up in there, do you?
Yeah. But I remember, something. But anyway, that was my point, just about, and I like it, so.
Well, I, I think they really should have something.
Might be social champion too, just a hauling permit, I think somebody's going to do, like I said, we're going to haul in, one day, if we're hauling in three hundred, I think we ought to.
Categorize the hauling permit.
Yeah, I mean, just.
No, that plane's categorized.
Might be, might be something on evaluation there, like if you haul three hundred, those going to be, you know, X amount of loads. But if we need a motion. But if we need a motion to... I put a perjury, I made a motion to put an ordinance on or perjury by the time of...
Motion. And motion is safe. Perjury in the town.
Hi, Sarah. Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
The ordinance revealing Ringwood ordinance number 10-14 and all other ordinances in conflict here. That will include for like the whole finding construction blasting and second hauling. Again, no demolition permit discretion.
Thank you very much. I don't know whether this is to uplift Tom one more time or what, but we've got a Tom Marsh in of building inspectors now, so if that means anything to you, don't take that as a bad thing, Seth. It's actually a compliment.
They're hiring, they're hiring.
Seth, Seth has done an amazing job in a few, if nothing else, take a tour of the office back there and you can see the desk. So make some major changes back there. Thanks, Seth. Good on you, good on you. Number five, City Clerk, the resolution that bid in office on the day of property storage in the event of a disaster.
Uh, this is, it had outdated information in the one, I've attached the one board and it has, and everyone's looking at this man. I took the names out actually and just put the positions in, just so, um, probably not going to see a change hopefully very soon. But I just thought it would be better to put positions in. That's really all of you.
Motion to pass the updated ordinance.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
A motion to say to pass the updated resolution.
Mr. Megan?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Number six is Ms. Leanne Christman is here. She has a bonding issue regarding ordinance 19-01 erosion control. These folks came to my office last week, I believe it was, and had a good discussion and told me their story. And I'll, I'll let them tell you their story. But I, I felt the need to help them and try to help them. We, I think we made some phone calls to some folks and I think that, I think that was to no avail. So my only advice to them was to come to council, explain their, their plight and their problem and see what, if we can do something to help them. So I'll let you folks talk.
Yeah, so this is for Leanne Christman, who is my mother, is wife. She was unable to be here tonight. I'm Haley Christman. This is my daughter, Mike. Mike Christman. And she's operating manager and I am also almost the founder of Hoppers USA. We're a dump trucking company. We have three truck, well, we have four. We have three now. It's a brand new business. People have been in operations since July first, but we're doing very, very well. However, we cannot keep putting these dump trucks on my parents' front yard. It's just not usable. So we purchased the six acre lot right next to, at 2266 S 2312 East Center Street. It is a commercial piece of land. We did purchase it. It is ours. We have plans to build a shop out on that land because we want this Hoppers USA, our dump trucking operations to grow, to expand. We've hired four people as of right now. We're doing very well. We want this to be in Greenwood. This is our home. We want to help develop it. We cannot get a bond to build on this property.
The bond we're running into is the $100,000 bond for the erosion control, 19-01.
Yes, it's in your ordinance section.
And everybody that we're trying to bond through is making us to put up $100,000. When I went to school, a bond was a partial. Everybody said, yeah, we'll give you a bond for Greenwood if you'll give us $100,000. That's not a bond. I can bring Greenwood City Council $100,000. I don't need a bond. You're coming to drop me a piece of paper. They're all saying because the reasons we're getting are conflicting, but mostly because we are invested in from overseas. But we're mostly an American company. We're 90% American company. But we have some investors that are South Korean, even our American names are South, or people are from South Korean names. And if you're coming completely, they're like, we don't want to invest in you when we look at our board members. Nobody looks at Walmart's board members to give a bond.
My husband's South Korean. He's American. But he is born South Korean, he is born American, he has a South Korean name. His company is in South Korea, is our parent company. So we as bonding agencies see that. It scares them, but what's most scary is that we're requiring a $10,000 minimum, which is in your section 10, says without, under any circumstance, no less than $100,000. We can't even get accurate estimate of how much the dirt work is going to cost.
We can't even go up there and stick a shovel in it because of the Greenwood's ordinances are blocking it. So I can't test the dirt. Only thing I can do so far is to lay one on one. And it is marked. But I can't even go up there and stick a shovel in that dirt because this bond is blocking it. I've got all the permits cleared. I've been purchased them. But I've been cleared with the state to come off the highway. I've been cleared with Sunny Bell, the city permit, the building permits. I have projections from Gary Hayes, which is a local erector, going to build my building. I have a local concrete man for my concrete. I have a local business that's going to do all my dirt work. Everything going to be done to this property, which is going to quadruple in value, is going to be done right here with Greenwood people. But we are being blocked by a piece of paper.
We understand what this $100,000 minimum was.
Yes, we understand. We discussed that with you. We're not going to go up there and rake the top soil and the shell out of it. We know that happens. I see it. I work dump trucks. I know. We're not going to do this. We're, we're going to employ more people. Hoppers USA is going to have 21 to 25 employees within the next year, year and a half, which will put Greenwood people to work. We're going to upgrade Greenwood on that end of town and push businesses and industry that far to that direction into your, the gray area out there, I call it. I mean, you've got city limits and it stopped. I know, but I live on Deerwood Loop. City limits didn't even exist when I moved out there. And I'm completely surrounded. I live on a peninsula. Literally, I'm on the end of the peninsula. But it's, we're, we're, we're moving, trying to move forward, but we feel like every time we take a step forward, we're taking three, we're getting pushed back three steps because of this. And what we're asking for is an amendment or an exemption, something to help us on this $100,000 bond. We're, we're going to bull rush this group. We're going to, if we had this bond in our hand today, there would be bulldozers, excavators, rollers, everything out there tomorrow. I could have Archon doing my dirt testing. We would be gone. We could roll. Within a month, you can see what we're doing. We're just looking for help because we've run out of options. We, we get dead ends there. We're now to the point of, why did we invest in Greenwood? I mean, we're, we're, we're frustrated.
I've reached out to three different insurance companies and we have reached out to a total of eight bonding agencies. And every single one of them is coming back saying, they will give us a bond if we put down $100,000 in collateral, that they will hold on to.
They're going to make money off of us being, I mean, it is. And that is our billing money. That's the money we're going to invest in Greenwood. That is part of our push forward to help Greenwood this way. It's not the numbers that are really frustrating. It's just we're handcuffed, you know.
Somebody help me understand this. This ordinance is to keep somebody from digging up the side of the hill. With what we have going on.
I have an, I have an angle, but I'd say yes.
Why does this ordinance apply to what they're calling?
He's grading, the detail, the specifics in this ordinance says if you move dirt...
We can't, we can't stick a shovel in because of this.
Then why doesn't it apply to Reagan Clements making a house pad?
They're building on it.
Yeah.
They're putting the shell on the dirt. I'm taking the dirt out because I'm going to improve it. I'm going to put the shell below the dirt line, bring it up and put gravel and concrete asphalt.
Daniel, it's anything over an acre.
Yeah, anything over an acre.
That's right. I'm sorry. That's the part I was...
Anything over an acre.
Anything over an acre. So it doesn't, it's not a house issue. It's not residential or commercial if you're listening. Now, I'm going to throw this out and Mr. Hamby's, and I said this to these folks, I believe, I guess, maybe I did, not much Mr. Marsh. I know, and I don't know if this could apply or would apply or have anything to do with it, but you offered, if you will, to hand us a check as assurance, if you will. I don't know if that's still on the table.
It's still on the table. What's that in front of you, talk?
The reason I bring that up is so, I know we accepted a check as a bond in the bidding process. And it was, it was the bidding bond. It wasn't a, it wasn't a...
Card or bond.
Yeah, it was a bid bond. During the bidding process, if you remember, the renter, Carter's presented a check for us to hold during the bidding process. I don't know if that could apply in this case. Again, it's not a bid process, it's not a bid bond, but it's a, you're trying to get a bond to dig dirt.
Um, when that ordinance is written, you talk to a paragraph here and says what's...
Because it, yeah, that's, and that's what they're...
This bond will not even pertain to us more than 30 to 45 days because it's big dirt. I will have that part done within 30 to 45 days.
Weather permitting.
And share up the weather permitting against it. It takes my, but it will be shell, gravel above that pad buildup, building more concrete.
I, I, I don't know what the word is, but I feel your pain on, and especially, and I think it is what it is in the ordinance. And I don't know if we can do anything. That's why I wanted you to come and speak to council.
I'm going to make you can do this, amend the ordinance.
Let me ask you this real quick. Can you maybe have just answered it? Are you, or that seems low out there to me. Are you not having to bring in orders?
I have to take, I have to, because it is, it is low because, and I'm at Archon, you walk it and look at it because it is a low lying area. We're going to have to take down the top soil. We're going to take it out, get down to the hard pack. We're going to come back in with shell, gravel, build it back up. We can get our trucks to the back part of the property, take it down, build up. We're improving the whole six acres, not just where we're building. We're going to build, bring it all up.
So the result of your doing what you're doing is the, in my opinion, this is just a two cent opinion, of the opposite of what this ordinance was put in place.
Yes, exactly. We're not taking, we're getting.
To not leave this scar.
We're not, we're not digging a dull mine or shell pit. We're not touching.
Well, it's a twofold thing, I think, this ordinance. One, for what you just said, we're not scarring the land. And two, you're not impacting the neighbors.
No.
I mean, if you brought it up and flooded Gary Hayes.
I want to come up with Gary Hayes and Alpha Packaging. Alpha Packaging's trailers actually parked on my property. Their trailers are about 15, 20 feet under my property. They've already got that bridle, so they have them there. But I want to bring it up to match there. If you can see where it goes across there, it falls down. It's all going to be done in time.
And your, and your, your placement of this particular... This is spot on, in my opinion.
That's why we bought that.
That's why we bought it.
We looked at five or six different pieces of commercial aid, even Fort Smith, outside of Greg. We like that one.
So y'all already submitted, y'all already applied for a grading permit?
Eight different bonds. No, not, I can't get the permit until I have the bond.
You already...
I mean, I can get the grading permit.
You already submitted a grading plan yet and an erosion control plan yet.
What's it called? The curve test where you dig down deep and see how far you can...
I have to go through Archon. Archon's going to do my testing for me.
We're planning to do the assessment later on.
But you feel like, so that you're saying that you have to have a bond just to get the plan?
Yes. I can't touch it. I can't stick it back.
But how do they determine, the bond is insurance that you do what you said would be on the plan? How do they determine what to charge you?
Well, I've got what the bond is for, the way it was worded to me is that I go out there and I, and do what he says, take the shell out, top soil out, and I leave. That $100,000 goes to the city of Greenwood. That bond is backing me up to go in there and replace everything that I tore up. Now, that bond is blocking me because of the way it's worded, from sticking a backhoe bucket in and testing the dirt, see how far I have to dig down to get to hard pack to build up. I can't do any testing without that bond, according to this ordinance. And according to everybody else, I mean, I'm dealing in the dump truck world every day and I know Mr. Andy out here on the... I was part of that. I was the one hauling shell at him when he got shut off because he didn't have the bond. The rental company out here on 71. My trucks were the ones sitting there when he got shut off because he was failing to haul shell. So I feel his pain and I talked to three or four other people and they're like, no, you cannot touch the dirt. Do not touch nothing until you have that bond.
So at what point do you develop a grading plan?
My grading plan?
Yes.
I have, I do not have a complete plan set up yet because I was going to wait on Archon to give me the testing results. And then I was going to have 3W excavation come in and we, well, I've got it drawn up. We're just going to driveway and I'm trying to back foot up a small building.
I'm not sure I totally understand because in section 10, you're required to submit a grading, you know, for a grading permit, you're, you're required to submit a grading plan and erosion settlement control plan. And based on that, that's what a bonding company would look at to ensure you make sure that you're doing the right thing and that we're not leaving the citizens of Greenwood at risk of something you may or may not do that affects them. But without a grading plan, how, how's a bonding, bonding, that may even work as a term?
They're not, they're, they have no clue. They're just going off of what names are on my list and looking at our, whatever they're looking at, going up, we won't give you a bond.
We're looking at our shareholders list, our ownership list, as well as this $100,000, $100,000 grant loan. And that's all the information they have been requesting and they're just going to say no.
Okay, I understand.
We haven't presented anything to them, like you're talking about. I have not presented anything to a bonding company on the grading proposal. They have not asked for nothing. They blocked us before we get that far.
And who, you say they blocked you, who's blocking you?
They refuse it. Or they tell us, we have to put $100,000 up for collateral. They won't even...
The bonding company?
Yes.
Yeah, if you go to jail, you bond out for 10%. We're not against that. We're all for that. We understand that. But when you got the $100,000 bond and I'm going to get you out of jail for $100,000, that's not a bond. I just bought you out.
But you've not submitted anything to Greenwood yet. You've not submitted a grading plan, sediment control plan?
No, no, we're trying to get this bond. And I talked to Sunny Bell and he said, the permit's okay, you know, because we have to get the permit from him. He said, just get the bond. And we thought it was a simple procedure when we started this. We purchased the property. He said, get the $100,000 bond. Come down and see me. I'll get you a grading permit. And once you get to the building process, process, you can get the building permit. Just have your general contractor, which is Gary Hayes, give us all the numbers and stuff and everything will be, it's just going to... It sounded so simple until this $100,000 bond was smacked.
So who will prepare your grading and erosion plan?
It would be Jimmy with 3W excavation. He's going to do all my dirt work.
Yeah, but somebody's got to engineer and submit a plan. So who's going to do that?
Your general contractor?
General contractor, Gary Hayes, has got it drawn up on top of Guy Dickinson's office.
Yeah, we're not the construction part. We're talking about, we're talking about the grading and...
The, the road and the pad. I'm just building a road into the pad. That's what we're building. A 16 foot wide road, all of it, about two acres, and building a pad to put a free base in up there. That's all we're wanting to do right now. We're not grading any dirt. We're just basically taking a dozer and clearing out a road with brush and grass, put the shell down, gravel down, maybe concrete, and building up a building. But we can't, because we're coming off a state highway, we don't even have access to our property. We want to go up there and look at where the parking, Alpha's parking lot. And the guy come out with Archon and he said, I can't dig your test holes. He needs eight test holes to give me the depth of which I have to use the dozer, whether it may be depth far or two foot, push out the foot back. To prove, to prove that where we can bring dump trucks in.
Rod, is your question more about what we're requiring, the building department's requiring of his grading plan? Is that what you're, where you're headed with it? Or...
Well, we seem to say though, I mean, I'm not trying to answer Rod here, but we, we're saying in section eight, you need to submit an erosion sediment control plan.
Section seven, it says, grading plan specifications. The applicant shall prepare and submit a grading plan that shall be, so it's got one group of things. Based upon that plan, you are going to have to get that insured and make sure that this happens.
Right, and that, and that's, I mean, I'm not...
But I don't understand the parts of what it was.
Well, he, he's... I don't know either. I mean, I, I see it like this. He's, he can't, we're not allowing him a permit because he can't be bonded so far. What, I mean, to get, in order for him to obtain the permit, he is going to have to come, come up with those requirements. Is that, I mean, that's, that's how I'm looking at this. He is, he is going to have to turn in the, these...
But what Rod's saying is normally that you take somebody like Brown Little Far or somebody like that. Usually what they, what they're basing on is their, is your, is your, is your plan. They're going to look at your plan. They don't, nine times out of 10, I don't talk about pick on the board, that type of deal. It's usually done by your, by your site plan, by your grading plan.
The bond company?
Yes, yes. It's like going down to Phil Hicks and saying, I want to insure a car. And he said, what kind of car? Well, I don't have one yet.
Well, I don't think he's getting, I don't, and this is an issue between him and... Well, I don't think he's getting, I don't, and this is an issue between him and the bond folks, obviously, I don't, I don't think he's...
It's not an issue with Greenwood.
Yeah.
It's just the bond that Greenwood is requiring is what they're saying we can't cope with.
But Grant Deloney, he wants to get a bond, and he had an engineer do the grading and erosion control, submitted that, and then we got him a permit, but the ordinance says a minimum of a hundred thousand dollar bond, and he didn't wanna go through all the, the other part, the expense of engineer drawings and all that, and then not being able to get the bond. So he got, he got the bond, which, you know, that allowed him to come to Seth, and then Seth, with the engineer drawings, wrote him a permit.
So, so we're...
Did Andy have to put up a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, it was a bond, yeah. Rod, he didn't have to put up a hundred thousand dollars.
The company, he got it through, we tried with that. We tried, and, and, yes, he did have to put up.
So what I'm trying to figure out is why we got construction stopped because of this ordinance, yet what we were trying to stop was digging up the side of that hill out there, and still being dug up.
He has his permit, he's bonded now.
He had about a thousand dollar bond, he didn't...
He also has, he's gone through, through his active plan.
My, my question would be, you know, if he wanted to do test holes out there, he's not asserting an acre of ground.
No, I'm not gonna be doing, well, I'm gonna be moving more than an acre of ground, that was the question, no.
And digging to find out how deep he had to go, things like that, I don't think that that's gonna hold him up, but once you sweep off the acre of ground, then this ordinance comes in and blows it. Otherwise, we're talking about, like Greg and Clinton, they can build a house, and you know, he's only doing small houses. Well, I said, Andy, with, he, he got the bond, and then once he got the bond...
Then he presented engineering drawings.
Alpha hired an engineering for him, and he called in and approved, and he went on.
That, and if you give engineering drawings to any insurance or bonding company, they have no idea what they're looking at. They cannot place a valuation on it.
You understand, go forward, let me do it.
Exactly. I've done with this the last, well, since I started, three months ago. This is the third one that we're trying to issue.
Well, I guess, and I'm here, and I, I would, Rod, I'm trying to, I mean, to do kind of a construction thing, but is there a way that, like, a third party, like Sam, that, like, construction, they assume kind of the the procedure, they're the ones that gets the bond, you know, and then you just, you know, they're kicking over to you and it's all done.
I have the bond. Because I'm the one personally responsible for it, I mean, this guy could come and tear it up, but it comes back on me because I own the dirt. So it's got to be the owner of the property. And that's the way the bond people are explaining it. It can't be, like you said, a third party, I can get you to go give me a bond, and you go in there, or I go in there, right, and then you're in trouble. You know, you're losing your hundred thousand or whatever. So it's got to be the person that's accountable for what is going to be done. And there's no doubt what's gonna be done, we're gonna call a group of the guys that, that end of the city, but we have to get to that point.
So the ordinance is in place to protect the citizens of Greenwood, protect the surrounding property owners? So what they're seeking is a way of not complying to the ordinance, and still, but it's up to us to protect the citizens of Greenwood and surrounding property owners. And I don't understand a way to do that without complying with the ordinance, and making it fair to everyone else. You all have ideas?
Well, like I said, more likely in a, a normal situation, you know, you're, you're just like Sam, putting up ten percent, you know, like...
And that's why the other situations is already ongoing, because they were able to just put up ten percent, you know, uh, and to get their hundred thousand dollar bond. And you're saying here, he has to put up a whole hundred thousand.
Andy did not have to put up ten thousand.
It was, it was fairly close to that, from what I understand.
Ten thousand, so ten percent?
I'm sorry, a hundred thousand. He didn't have to put up even a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollar bond.
Well, I don't, why, why are, why are y'all getting that kind of pushback?
I have no idea. And I've asked the bond company...
They have a four, they have a four name on their...
We have four names on our shareholders.
I might be scared for them, I don't know.
They don't, they don't come out and say that.
Of course I don't come out and say that.
Sure, I didn't say that, I'm trying to...
No, I don't, I don't, I just wanna make shh clear.
No, 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 they're smarter than that.
And I've been listening to that, so no.
We're assuming, yes, and we're reading between the lines, but... Well, we're, 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 the reason we're here, we're just looking for, we're, we're front of a dead end. We're to the point now that we're just standing with our hands up. You know, I've got fourteen people with estimates and things ready to go to work, more concrete, laying shale, producing, you know, engineers just showing us that our work is ready to work. But I can't put all that money out there and do anything, make a next step forward until I clear this lawn hurdle. Yes, I can get the Arcon to dig out the holes. It's a questionable gray area, because we are gonna have to dig multiple holes, so we're gonna be traveling a six acre fiber. So he told me, he said, it's kind of a gray area, I hate the stuff in it.
I mean, the test holes shouldn't fall under this, right?
Grading excavation, you think overnight, or they're moving overnight?
We'll be covered number six. I mean, we'll be digging test holes, but it's gonna be over a six acre.
Well, I guess you get into definitions of whether a test hole's excavation.
Now, I've contacted different municipalities, and you only have grading excavation in the right ways and easements, and it's about five thousand dollars. So I mean, I've, I've researched this, I made some contacts, Fort Smith, Northwest Arkansas, Little Vod, and it's, it's five to ten thousand dollars for a grading excavation, strictly for easements and right ways. So that's, I mean, I understand they're, because I just had two or three, you know, last month and one part, the same situation.
Because of the dollar amount?
Because of the dollar amount, I ain't got the dollars.
Well, I can assure you, the reason that dollar amount's probably in there is because we've got to get somewhere many times.
I have, I have.
And that's before you were here, trust me, there's some, there's stuff that, that didn't even have a bond.
I mean, we made it bad on purpose.
Yeah, and that is, that was the reason...
Shake your hair.
This was, this bond was made for people, uh, I see it in the world, going out there and taking the topsoil, the shale, digging all the good dirt out of it, keeping the rock out, digging the bank out, this is the one piece, and leaving. You know, stealing two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Well, you drive around Greenwood and see why we created this.
Yes, we see it, we see it. I'm in the dump trucking world, I see it. I'm, I'm not gonna say I'm part of it, but I see it. You know, it's everywhere. But this property is a piece of flat ground that's been sitting there next to Alpha Packaging. So we purchased it on the, on the permission to improve it and upgrade it and build on it and, and bring it off to Greenwood. Because we're gonna hire more trucks, we'll hire mechanics, we'll hire office people, and we're looking to expand.
So the only way I can see that you create a loophole in this...
I used that word the other day, and I, I didn't like that word either.
Well, that's probably a bad choice.
A concession.
An exception, perhaps. Is that we say, you know, we're, we're gonna take this calculated risk that says if it's ten acres or less, you don't fall under these requirements. You're taking this risk that somebody could go dig six acres of a hillside up and leave it for you to look at.
That's the other thing, you talk about the ten acres or less, but the way we can figure out something that says flat ground aside.
Yeah.
Because, uh, quarrying, what's the word I'm looking for, you know, digging, I thought I said it in the top, strip mining, that was what this made things for.
Well, what I'm thinking of the property, I don't remember if it was six hundred or four above, uh...
Jayhawk.
Yeah, Jayhawk, up here above the Mayor's firecracker stand. With that little rug.
The Mayor's pressure.
Yeah, what I'm talking about.
Oh, oh, yeah, where the, they had firing gun right there.
Jay, yeah, where the cannon range was.
Oh, oh. You all, you all think...
I don't know how big that little piece is right there.
That hole in the hillside.
You can see it from seventy-one highway.
We got that one, we got the one where everybody's...
It's probably not ten acres.
You got the double street there, you got the wolf in the law kiss, you got the wolf behind the dairy back in there.
You got one on off the Walker trailer?
Yeah. Were it ten acres?
Oh, and you're talking about square four or five acres or something.
Yeah. The rock quarry here was obviously bigger.
Well, I was wondering, all right, can we look at section ten and say, you know, it says, purchase a commercial bond, and we use some type of word and say, purchase a commercial bond or equivalent? Because I'm thinking right there, that, you know, a commercial bond is what you're, you're trying to do, and you, you know, uh, like the mayor's saying, you know, uh, we have that, like, cards, and I think even, uh, West management was going to, they, if they could do that, they were gonna write a check that night, and they, you know, didn't, didn't realize that they could do that.
Well, who, who's...
My head was West management.
No, they had an issue about having... Well, maybe it was the bond company there.
I had to call him up to vote him out.
Yeah, sure, they did have, you're right, they didn't have that. But, anyway.
But I'm just thinking, you know, can we, can we board it in such a way, Mr. Henry, you know, that, that, say that, you know, a commercial bond or pull it there up and let it be? We can have some wiggle run about that.
Okay, that's up to you, we can't do that. No, I'm just prepared for it to do that, but you just tell me what...
It can be amended.
You want it, yeah. Ultimately, we have to amend this and be in next month before we can make the action.
Right.
But we've done it before, where there's been rules, 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 or with council discretion, they can do this, this, this. We have that in a bunch of stuff.
And that's exactly, the, the last month's meeting there, it wasn't the ordinance, I was kinda making a thing about it, and the, the last piece of that is, it's your, what, what?
It was the water tap stuff, we were talking about it, letting some people flow.
Twenty thousand dollars, or at the, at the council discretion, more or less. Yeah, that, there, it was on water tap.
Ultimately, Rod hits the nail on the head. We can do it, and say, we're away with the bond deal for y'all, go start digging, and then, God forbid, thirty days, y'all packed up the west, and we're sitting out there with this dirt field. That's why this is in there, so we have a hundred green, go back and fix the dirt field.
That, when we amend this ordinance, if we amend this ordinance again, one of the things we need to put in this ordinance that we talked about in previous discussions is a timeframe associated with these things. That we've, that we're, you know, we've got, I know, we've got a, whatever we're talking about, we'll go, a site plan out here for the hillside, but that can be done in
six months, six years.
Twenty-one sixty-four, but for all we know, you know what I mean, there's no timeframe to that. If you're gonna do this, get this done in the next three years, or something.
Or if you're gonna get a bond, I would think it matches the site plan.
Yeah. I mean, it, 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 the body wasn't, this is what they're trying to do, but, you know. Yeah, we got a plan to...
But you're right.
We've got a plan to stair step this, and it's all gonna be great.
So we need to fill up this building, get back next month, and we'll have some loophole for it. Because I, I, it sickens me right now to know that he can't go out there and get his business going.
No, I'm telling you, order.
There, I mean, it's weird to me that they wouldn't give him the, the tron, the, the diagonal horn or something, helping a lot, they want a little...
How, what, could we not just simply, Mr. Henry, have an exclusion in this vein, that says this this is not pertaining to normal, uh, site prep for building prep? This is not what we're talking about. You know, this doesn't, this is not... I mean, somebody could go dig a ten foot deep hole and go broke and leave. Sure, you've still got that profit, but, you know, that's not the intent of this ordinance.
I think if we amended, we might need to put it, you know, parts of this ordinance could be waived with council discretion. And then if we also amend, I agree with you, we ought to go back in and add timeframes on these plans, because these plans are perpetual, they never end. And then we have no way of going after the bond, we really don't have that.
Rod, the permits have a time limit on them.
The permits have a time limit on them?
Yeah.
What's the time limit?
Says, what's the time limit on?
Six months.
Six months.
Six months.
Yeah, but I think this oughta put, I'm sure, I'm sure we want this done.
So for example, the one out there, brings up a whole other subject, we don't know if we need to do it too deep, but I just want to watch on our mind. So that, that one out there behind Fitz Jim, in six months, that permit's gonna come up. Does that, is that what I understand?
Yes.
It's over to you.
We don't renew the permit.
Well, we don't renew, I mean, I just foresee it, because I dropped another thing here today, and it's not, I haven't even seen the plan, but I got a pretty good feeling, if you go out there and look, it doesn't match.
It does not.
It does not. So there shouldn't be a reason to redo that permit, and if it's bonded...
Well, can we not stop it if it don't match the site plan?
Can't after a certain period.
Okay, that's all, that's not, so we won't know when that permit comes in. And if, Mr. Henry... We need to go back to his, we need to figure out what we're doing. Is an interpretation, you know, a, a, a check for a hundred thousand dollars from a commercial entity, is that, does that be considered a commercial bond?
Wherever you put it in this ordinance, that it cannot be under this ordinance as of the present right now, no, but if you want to change that and say that's, that's an expression of the council, you can do that.
I don't know if a check can be considered a, a bond or not. That's, that's what you got.
I think, so...
Again, we accepted, as a bid bond, we accepted the check, and I mean, what if we pulled out, it was intended, it was where's check over?
Five for ten, whatever.
Ten, what was that, twenty thousand dollar check?
Throw that from San...
Cards?
It's twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand.
Would a letter of credit suffice? As a bond?
Say, I could write you a check for a hundred thousand dollars.
I thought you needed money.
Or, or maybe. Is it possible?
Get rid of my crap.
I was confused, you're saying, I was like...
So, I think...
Take it to the bank like that.
What we talked about, just for everybody, three things we should do to this ordinance. One, insert a timeframe for completion of the work within some rental period of time. I mean, you know, I don't even know what that is.
Well, I think you just would get a job.
Job, a job, but something like ours should be completed in less than a year, but if you're building like a apartment complex out here, it may take you two to three years. It depends on job to job.
I mean, I think, in my opinion, it's two years. Which lets, you know, somebody building a building is gonna have their site prep. If you got your site prep done in two years, you got a whole bunch of people...
One part of that is, is the review, as these guys have stated, you got a review time, and when it comes back up, even if it's just six months, it's reviewed, and if things are going well, and the city's accepted what's being done compared to their site plan, you just, we're good.
Exactly, that's what, so you might have an exception, because I mean, somebody, you can go out there and let it sit, that they're making progress, but they've had bad weather along the way, you know.
But something that gets us... We just can't go long for my grandchild.
And I, I love the idea, and I might board it if you can, the concession, which, which I, I would, a hillside of a mountain compared to a flat. I, I mean, in my mind, I guess you can do more, you can do, you can certainly leave it in bad shape, but if you're, 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 and I'm not just talking about you, but if you're looking at six acres, and your point is to build a pad, build a building on it, it's not gonna, I mean, what?
It's not a whole lot, you could do it.
Worse than it is.
Well, I mean, it's not like you said, you're in there like, just trip lining off the rest or whatever, and just big old crank.
Right. You ended up, you know, fooling up on you.
Maybe we could, instead of, I got two other bullet points, council discretion
and exclusion for a building site prep. Maybe instead of doing it that way, you have a tier of bond that if you're digging up the side of the mountain, it's a hundred thousand dollars. If you're building site prep, it's fifty thousand dollars, you can say so, but, you know what I mean? Instead of saying, or this excludes, you're excluded because you're building a, this is building site prep, because you could still, we could still get left holding the bag on that, right? But we could say, if you're building, if this is building site prep excavation, maybe we need to consider it's flat ground. Well, it's fifty thousand dollars, because this guy's building a building.
I would like to point out, in section ten, it says, all applicants shall be required to purchase a commercial bond in the amount which is based on the risk of the site plan as determined by the building department. The risk tearing down a mountain is a whole lot different than the risk of a site plan, there's your out right there. But you tap the minimum risk at a hundred thousand, that's where you tear that.
Yep.
Right there. And then the other question... Right there. And then the other question would be whether, if you were doing a bond, whether you do cash or legally sufficient. Legally sufficient being a term that you pledge assets. If you were to pledge assets, the city would have to look at the liquidity of the asset because you, you needed to grab that asset and sell it to recoup your cost of putting back whatever was damaged. Um, you wouldn't want something that would be too long of a period before you could gain cash from it. So, these would have to be very liquid assets if it were pledged. And you're doing it sort of like the court system, but you could say cash or cash equivalent. Uh, and those are all terms that you could write into this to give you some wiggle room, but that still means you have to look at revision to this. But those are just some suggestions to you to.
But, but we could, but we could alter ten, you know, instead of saying not less than a hundred, thousand under any circumstance, that could be.
Tiered.
Tiered.
And it also answers Lance's comment, or actually, I think it was Rod's, about the site plan. This technically says you need the site plan in order to establish what the bond is. You can't establish the bond without a site plan.
Right.
That's what it's saying because you have to establish the risk.
Yeah.
Right.
There you go. Good luck.
Just for curiosity sake, not, what, what is your timeframe on?
Start to finish or start on?
No, what, when you, I know you want to get going.
I'm happy to give you information.
If, if the council is indeed considering some amendment to this ordinance.
I'm, I'm at, I'm at the council.
And, well, as they established without a special call meeting, that's, that's a month away.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at y'all's mercy now because I'm, like I said, I run into eight road lots of their bond company and I'm sitting dead still with the first piece of property that I own.
And we, and we have one scheduled, which I guess we could, I'm not getting there yet. Was that where you checked?
Yes.
We've got one scheduled, which you could add to the, that agenda, if, if you so desired to.
Now, if you go to a bond company who's, I don't understand why they're demanding a hundred thousand and they, Andy pays ten thousand. That's a whole different can of worms.
They're the only one owner.
Right.
He's one owner, man on, on, on the paper, he's one man, Andy Angeloni.
We're a corporation.
We're a corporation. We are a corporation, same as Walmart, and we have shareholders. And those shareholders are international, some almost ninety percent of them are American, Americans. But we have international shareholders and that's, they, they see our list and, oh. We don't know why they have to see our list, but because you know if Walmart built this property out here, they need to show every shareholder Walmart has. But we're our one. They didn't call me and ask, so.
I think, Mr., not to speak for him, but I think Mr. Angeloni had a little bit of issue himself to, he's obtained a bond for that amount for what his project is. I'm, I'm not here to speak on his bond people, but he, he admitted. Cause as I said, he's, he's been very patient with us.
And we had Walmart built and tracked this plot. I mean, I, I assume maybe.
For a hundred thousand of all of them, they're not, they're not, they're not, they're not here to hold this.
Yeah, I have kids that for it.
Right. Yeah, you know, they took a hundred thousand, another, this trash extra out back and.
And so, uh, I'd say, yeah, we're, you know, either, uh, want to try to consider for the special call meeting Thursday, or do you want to try to do it for thirty days about?
That's a stupid question, but I mean, can your dirt contractor not bond?
That's what I was.
Can your dirt contractor not bond it?
Has to be owner. If the dirt contractor's bonded, he can go out there and tear it up and leave. I'm still stuck with the oil property. You have to be, they have to have somebody to hold. Responsible.
If he's bonded, I mean, if he's bonded.
He leaves, we take the bond.
No, that's true. If your, if your dirt work contractor bonds it, we have security. We, we, we are. But does that count, does that count? If my dirt workers are bonded, if he has the surety bond, I guess we call it.
The way I read it, yes, because we, we're.
We want a bond on the property.
Cause here's the deal.
But it says all, it says all Africans, you have to be.
All that does for you is that protects you with your dirt contractor. If you make him bond, if he's able to bond you, he's not gonna leave you hanging high and dry. Because not, you're gonna pull the bond. So, you know what I'm saying? It covers, covers you, it covers us. So, and.
If, now, you, the, the, the contract would also have to be the one that's permitted. Due to what this, right?
Cause that would be.
Not him.
It's just like his general contractor. His general contractor, he holds the permit.
He holds the permit.
I'm just saying.
But the dirt also has to be bonded.
Right. No, I, I accept, I know that, I'm just saying, it wouldn't be him getting the permit in his name if his contractor didn't.
I mean, I'm just trying to, trying to. And that would satisfy the city's, and protect the city if the dirt contractor got bonded for this grading and erosion plan.
Have the dirt contractor pull the permit.
And a dirt contractor holds the permit.
Not you.
Not him. Then you'll pass that on. It's just like, it's just like when, I hired somebody to come put a, eat their meat and they got to manage your permit. Dirt bosses. But they're gonna pass it on to me, I can assure you.
They may have heard.
So.
But we can't let that.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm just saying, that's, that's an avenue for you and, and that would, probably make, make a lot more easier.
Well, if they did that, then this would be quicker. He doesn't need us to modify the orders.
No, the bottom line is.
It needs to be modified.
The bottom line is, we've got a hundred thousand on bond on this deal and if Wheeler, Jimmy Wheeler agreed that you do, and that's our work, you go get a hundred thousand dollar bond on this dirt project and show him something that he's got a hundred thousand dollar bond on this village protecting him and us. Doesn't today, he's gonna have, whenever he gets permits, there's gonna be somebody gonna have to help him that bond. So it don't matter whether it's him or the dirt guy, but that job's bonded.
Oh, we care that the bond is against that piece of property.
That's exactly right. And your general contractor technically should be taking care of all this.
Right.
He holds the bond.
Right, we're holding the bond. City agreement, it's holding bond.
Right.
Now, as far as amending, you know, I'm okay with amending.
There should at least be a timeframe in this.
Yeah, it's a timeframe, but let's take three months where we can really think.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to go through the process of amending it, but not, he doesn't have to wait.
So what you found out from these gentlemen is that your contractor bonds, permits, you're ready to rock it?
I've been around the trust for a long time and I can assure you that when you do work with general contractors, I've had to pull bonds myself and exactly what I do. But, the dirt contractor's pulling bond on the dirt work.
Yeah.
You know, so just like your deal there. If you're gonna be the G C of the deal yourself, you would expect that dirt contractor to bond that. Technically, on the commercial side of it. So, that's just my two cents. I'm not gonna tell you how to run the business.
Okay. All right, I get, I get interpreted the way it was worded and I will.
Well, ultimately, you're the general contractor on your project, right? You're the G C.
I'm chief, yeah, I'm not the general contractor. Jerry, Jerry Hayes is actually gonna be the general contractor, but he's gonna do the concrete and the building. And you're gonna do the dirt work, so you're like.
You're gonna complete the rest, you're gonna act as the general contractor. The simplest way is just get the dirt contractor to bond all, all the grading and erosion land and that'll make the city happy.
A lot of bad effort, yeah.
We'll see if it works. I mean, I'm not saying anything will work at this point.
No, I know it. But he, he's probably been there and done that, I assume, Jimmy.
I'm going to, we'll see.
That's right, that, that's true.
It's an avenue for you.
That's an avenue. I will take that avenue and I will look at it.
We, we try to put this all in special, we need to at least relook at some remapping of this, we need to contact him later, at least, whatever. In case, well, he may.
But at that, but at that point, we, I'm like, Rod, I would rather take, I'd rather take a good three months to go through this because there needs to be some timeframes in this, this deal here.
So, best case scenario, you get to do what has been suggested, Mr. Wheeler's able to do that for you. Worst case, you let us know ASAP that that can happen for whatever reason.
So, Mike, Sonny, Seth, is there any reason we can't do what we just said?
I, I don't see any reason. We just have to follow the ordinance and that's the answer.
And we're detecting on that deal, by that way, because, I mean, you, he agreed for it to get the permits.
But we don't have wording in here that says the bonding is in his name.
It's not. We just got, we want a hundred thousand dollar bond.
He just said, he just said they have bond, so whoever that is, in this case it'd be Mr. Wheeler.
Jimmy Wheeler needs to come up front for the dirt.
I mean, he's, he's the full boss of the dirt. But he's gonna pass it on, the, I mean, the cost, the cost is gonna be, regardless, I mean, anybody in their right mind that knows how to do it, you know?
Absolutely.
I mean, I, whenever I've had to do it, I pass it on. I mean, you're, why would you want to eat that?
Did that help?
It helped. I mean, it gives us avenues. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, ordinance to do business with Tommy Scarborough. Mr. Tommy Scarborough is a, my brother-in-law. He is on a list of vendors that, uh, as we pursue and Mr. Bell and along with Seth's help goes out and finds the places that need mowed, uh, whether they be residents or whatever, he's, Tommy's on a list of vendors that I'm, I'm calling on to take turns or mowing these. I don't wanna, he's turning it over to one person. I don't wanna get that several angle of the list. He happened to be one of them, so.
Unquestionable character.
Unquestionable character, indeed. Well, that's probably his wife.
Are we currently doing business with him? Is this an emergency?
He has taken care of some business for us.
Maker throw it here too?
Maker, you know, I didn't, I didn't.
Maker.
Jerry, you guys want to actually shop a breeder?
I'd like a motion to put this on the first reading.
Second.
Motion second.
Lester.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Daniel. An ordinance authorizing the sale of any of that business will probably start with the emergency.
I'd like a motion to, wait, the second, third reading.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Terry. Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Victor.
Yes.
I'd like a motion to the, uh, please.
Motion second to the.
Lester.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes. Thank you.
I'd like a motion, Matt Mercer, second.
Motion seconds and Matt Mercer.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dan. Mr. Maker.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, is there a Maker mowing card that I need to run? No, no. Number eight is, uh, Maker Mower. City clerk additional, I have an approval for a city auction list.
Guess we have two additional items and there are power items in the packet.
And mowers and the walk-in sprays.
Tommy, four?
No, no.
And then it's here to answer questions you need to ask.
Make a motion, make a motion we approve, I mean, I make a motion we approve the additional two items.
Okay.
Motion seconds, we approve the additional two items.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Lester.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Victor.
Yes.
Daniel.
I was gonna ask one option, let us get ready.
Yes.
One sec.
One sec. All right, thank you. Uh, number nine is my next department, resolution to amend budget for road construction slash.
As you know, we have a, a resolution that, when we adopted the budget, that says any item that is an unbudgeted item greater than five thousand dollars or anticipated to be greater than five thousand dollars needs to be approved by the city council. Um, regardless of whether they are within their budget constraints or not, it is an unbudgeted item. Well, that pertains to the construction of the road at Bell Park, the one that's being used as an egress for right now emergency vehicles to both enter and leave, uh, the park. Uh, I'm giving it another avenue other than the main entrance in and out of Bell Park. Uh, the estimated cost is about twenty thousand dollars to do this and the funding is coming from the, it's a capital expenditure from the street department who is gonna be the ones doing the construction work. And we're looking at, uh, no additional cost to the, uh, department's budget. Primarily because the twenty twenty capital expenditures, uh, have a very big cushion right now as a result of a purchase of a dump truck that was far less than what was budgeted. So the eighty-four thousand dollars that was saved on that truck is right now, uh, where we're gonna be looking to allocate that twenty thousand dollars for the road. So, um, there's no additional, uh, funding needs from the department's fund. So, uh, with that, we ask that this be approved so that that construction can, uh, the road can be built.
Will this road go over and connect to the road in front of the house?
Yes, the, I requested this road, uh, get quick attention due to the fact that we're having the, we've always, my years of parks director and certainly where, anytime, anytime there's a huge event, we all know there's one way in, one way out. And if there was ever an accident, whether it be fire truck needing to get out because they're parked up there for, for fall festival or police or whatever, it, it's been important to the parks department to have another access. So, uh, the, the road is currently referred to as, somebody else.
Summer.
Summer Ridge Road, uh, which we now own with the purchase of Parks Department made on the nineteen acres and the road.
So, it is, would literally, if you go hundred or fifty yards from the, before you get to the tower, and I'm close.
Right.
Before you got to that tower on Summer Ridge Road, handle off and go through the woods and connect exactly, as you said, to the existing pavement road. For emergency purposes only for now, but later we would like to come back. We've suggested to visit the parks and the, uh, street department of making basically a Y or an island. So, as you're coming around, if you go up to the top of Bell Park and you're, and you're getting ready to go out, you would take that exit, once we open it for daily use, you would take the new road to get out. And, and then later is that, where Summer Ridge Road becomes a, another entrance and exit of the park. As you're coming up Summer Ridge, you would, you would bury a ride and actually, I'm not sure what you call it, but you're gonna create a, a triangle, if you will, of green space. But, but the immediate need is just a straight in and or out, an exit versus exit.
Twenty thousand dollars didn't seem like much. What standard are we building? Not a paying.
For now, because Summer Ridge is not paid, but eventually it, it shall be.
So, basically kind of just extending what's already there.
Correct.
Like the one behind Subway, you just try to develop a pole and some grass.
Don't like Jayhawk or Lane up there.
But would it, would it, uh.
How wise would they?
What would be? But my request is that they build the, the base and, and they build it as if, not as if, but when eventually it, it is built to, to standard of a city street. Now, this is a street or Summer Ridge Road, I should say.
With, with the base support, are they a fire product or something?
Well, they're building it.
Yes.
According to standards of a city street, right?
Yes. Cause this, this is something the Parks Commission wants, right?
Yes, I haven't discussed it in a meeting.
They're all yes and.
But since, and I didn't bring that up because this is coming out of street.
Right.
But, and that's why, it does involve parks.
I think there's. I think crap. I think that's something.
Well, for now, and, and for now, it's an emergency.
It's not a public. There needs to be some, I mean, a house fire down the corner, a car wreck.
I.
That's one of the purposes for buying the property.
I would say that was, that was half the reason for buying the property.
Is to have another in and out at Bell Park.
There will be a gate on it, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, so as soon as, as soon, it will be open until Halloween night, day, night for our drive-through.
Well, from the park side, it will have a, some type, not, maybe not a gate, but a, a chain or something across there because there's actually, they've gotta get to that house, uh, Mike McConnell.
I mean, it's not gonna be open for public use until we get a paint.
Right.
Set up.
Right.
The route, the route of this road is approved by the Parks Commission, correct?
Pretty sure it will be.
I, I make a motion we approve the resolution pending the Parks Commission approval.
I think it's, I mean, and, I think we need to remove the, uh, ability for emergency vehicles, because I'm kind of really doubt, seriously, if, I mean, we'd want to, if I go up to Summer Road right now. I mean, you know, just give, you know, whether we. we'd wanna, or thing up to Summer Road right now, I mean, you know, just give, you know, whether we get stuck there or something.
Twenty thousand dollars, we're getting kind of a trade.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I'll, we're having a alternate emergency, uh, exit, you know, but not really just saying it is for emergency vehicles, 'cause I don't know if it really would sustain emergency vehicles. Let's just say it's a, an alternate exit.
Does it say it's for emergency?
Yes.
Before we get to the tower.
Emergency egress.
Yes.
And that's reasonable.
Emergency, yeah, it says emergency.
When they get ready to make an emergency street, it'll be in the budget, and you'll be looking at it.
I mean, if it's, if it's just an emergency.
They say emergency period, yeah, emergency egress.
Emergency vehicle, we're gonna use it if that's what it is.
How much?
It will.
Probably young thing.
Yeah. Technically, I guess technically, if, let's just say during our Halloween drive-through treat event, if someone of the, if, if, let's just say there is no ambulance up there, or can't get one in because, because of the traffic, if somebody needed to take somebody to hospital, it might not be an emergency vehicle, it might be a truck, or somebody's car, but it needs to get out, and that's the only way to get out.
Sure they can handle a hand.
Oh, I think, uh, he's building it to, to, it's gonna be, it's, and Summer Ridge Road.
Even like the police car, a brush truck.
But you, you're gonna, you can get a.
Me and Lancer are just figuring, you don't wanna drive to the ladder truck, the platform down.
You don't want to, but if you had to get it out, that's what it's, that's the purpose of it.
That's why I was asking how life was.
It'll be.
Just so you're not taking trees out of the process.
What else, you mean with the?
With the truck, not with the fire truck or something, I mean, you take, you take the engine three or the ladder up there, I mean, just make sure it's light enough, and you're not, you know. It's hard to look out for scratches.
If there is one house also there, it's probably live there.
Yes.
It's, 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 we'll make sure it's light, but that's not.
It's empty now, and it's to be, it's a, it's gonna be a rental property for McConnell's.
Well, and we bought on the same size of that house, or?
No, the opposite. We don't own anything, we on the road, there's nothing on the.
Can we straighten the road? South Southern?
No.
Road's a property line.
If you're looking at.
The road is a property line.
The road is a property.
Going up, it's not.
I mean, we own this, we.
I like to call.
For any purposes.
A resolution, like, how much should we just, eh, cross out vehicles and just say purposes? Emergency purposes.
I, I amend my motion to cross out emergency, say what you said?
The first where I asked.
The vehicles, because literally you.
Vehicles.
Hey, make, make it emergency purposes, that way it can be, somebody's car did not.
Replace vehicle with purposes, and, that's it. Second.
Did you go on Parks Department approval, depending that?
No, leaving that. I'm replacing vehicles with purposes, and, uh, adopting the resolution pending Parks.
That's what.
Commission approval.
Well. Sorry, we have a motion and a second.
What's Terry tonight? Or then, more about me.
Oh. Yes.
That would remind me of one glove.
Dennis Terry?
Yes.
It's Brown?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
And no one asked, but I'm, I'm FYI anyway, that, that Summer Ridge Road is a, now a city street, so that was accomplished. For a lane part.
So, it's on the page of the city?
It is, as, as is Damascus, and Damascus is on my list.
We got three.
It's, it's lived first as a city street.
Jayhawk.
Jayhawk, Damascus, and Summer Ridge.
So Damascus, Jayhawk, and then.
We can't pay Jayhawk though, just for, just for reason of. Thank you, guys.
I think it was, they were both sad, I'd make sure it, they're both sad.
Just for prospect, or, or property, or anything, whatever.
Come on.
All right, thank you. The department reports some questions from council. We have the Parks Department, the, uh, order, or reserve, planning, police, you know, that's HR, street department.
So, border.
I just say not, but I can't, no, it's fine.
Discuss what, yeah?
Border.
It has, it has been lifted, as you know, and I guess you know, it has been lifted, we got the, we got the official verbal authorization Saturday,
we got the official letter from the department today, so, there's Mr. Cross, if you wanna pick on him.
Hey. We, uh, had border, a lot of, because of low chlorine levels, I believe a couple of cities failed some of their Coca-Cola forms. Uh, what they do is when they take a sample, they try to grow stuff. If anything grows, it's called, you know, it's called Coca-Cola form. If it's E. coli, it turns different color, equalized, not easily in there. But if you grow anything at all, consider it a failure. So if it didn't have chlorine, you can grow some. Well, a few of them failed their Coca-Cola forms, and they found out there was not enough chlorine, so they put them on a precautionary border. And, so, they started sending their samples in Monday and Tuesday. Well, I got permission to send ours in Monday and Tuesday also at the time. When they failed, they passed, and we passed Monday, when they failed Tuesday, and it was on Hendrick Road, of all the places, that's where it failed. At that time, I called James Fork and, and said, listen, I'm gonna shut you off. We're gonna make our own water. We'll take two sets of ten samples, and if we pass or fail, that'll be on us. So if we, if they fail again, we, and we pass, we're still on. So, the health department was very, very, worked with me very well, and actually gave me their phone number to call on Saturday. I had, I took the samples to be tested in Fort Smith, 'cause it's a testing site, Fort Smith tested for us, did a very good job. He called me as soon as they came offline, said, you passed. I know Senator got off the phone with them, the health park called me and said, you passed, and so did James Fork, you're good to go. And that was on a Saturday, like one thirty, I called the mayor, he's calling over there, so, we were just trying to edge our bet, you know, it was not worth shutting off and taking more samples if we could've passed the first, if we'd been probably on Wednesday or Thursday, but since they failed part of one.
Did James Fork have an identified problem that they solved?
Uh, there's that word, everybody knows. The problem with everything is chlorine does a really great job of, of keeping people from getting sick. When you have triolamethanes, there's a word. You have byproducts from chlorine, the more chlorine you got, the more triolamethanes you got. You start busting that, you gotta turn your chlorine down, or, or you gotta figure out something to do with it, so that is, I think.
So it's not part of it? It's just their treatment process, it wasn't, there's something broke or out?
No, there was nothing broke. It's just, you know, they were trying to patch the triolamethanes, I believe.
They're playing the game, they're trying to stay within the parameters.
And this is not, this is what I heard. I'm not saying this is what happened, but, but, you know, I know that's what I would've done, you know, trying to maybe lower the chlorine. You had to, had to be triolamethanes one way, or, I mean, if you flunk, you flunk, so you gotta, gotta do something about it, so, it's just a, it's just a hard thing to pass, so.
I got two questions before I get this quarter to lose again. How many gallons do we get for them to take away a month?
Fifteen million.
Fifteen.
Around five hundred thousand.
And how much do you think right now, just what's in our tanks and pipes is James Fork water, you know what I'm saying?
About two-thirds. During the summer, almost three-fourths.
Right, but right now, we're making a third, and they're making two-thirds of our water.
We make, we, we get their water in a big gallon tank, and then we make water in a half a bit, send it to the east side, and then everything from ninety-six over is pretty much them. I'm sure we mix with it some, but, uh, mostly it's James Fork.
When James Fork comes into us, checking their chlorine and the tri, making sure they're within parameters?
Every, every month, we take ten tests, and that's why we took ten this one time, add two at once. We take five tests, two weeks later, we take five more tests, and these are, these are at approved, uh, sites that, that we test for, uh, Coca-Cola form, E. coli, and we test chlorine, so we know where we're at, and we have plenty of chlorine, so, I didn't see it being a problem, but since James Fork failed, everybody had the benefit, because you're buying water from them, so, to be safe, it's a border, precautionary, better to be precautionary than get someone sick, so, so that's what. Do you have a question?
Well, I was just saying, one thing that came up in the commission meeting, is that there's no verbiage in the contract that says, you know, if, you know, if the city Greenwood has to put on a, you know, border because of the water we dump at James Fork, there's no, you know, it's not a violation of the contract, we're still under contract, you know, I, I, five thou, five hundred thousand a day, or fifteen thousand a month, you know, and I said that, you know, that's something that really we need to look going forward, you know, or the next contract, that we need some, and then there, if we're buying water from you, it's gotta be portable water, you know, and if not, then there's some type of, uh, uh, precautions, you know, uh, for that, you know what I'm saying? I didn't, never really thought about the businesses that would be impacted too, that, uh, you know, could not be, you know, because of, uh, of water that's really beyond our control.
The only thing that it has in the contract is that if it is, indeed, not safe according to the standards established by the health department or state regulations, then that is considered a breach, and you could breach the contract for that. I'm not sure if you'd wanna go that route. The other thing that's in there is that there are things that the city is supposed to be doing that haven't been done, and there's no timeframe on when to enact a breach, so both parties have causation for a breach, but it's not in anybody's best interest to do that right now. There's no plan B.
Yeah, we had some other water sources back, back us up, it'd be one thing to start causing breach, but.
Then you're being on a contract and go plan B.
We hit the world city. Done that once before, when the mayor ended up taking out trash, so.
Montana, the two things that he referred, the two things that he referred to, the city, we asked this question, we, we talked about this just day, the Water and Water Commission talked about this contract, and, and the other day, or a week ago, whatever it was in their last meeting, the two things that the city has not provided, and we, and I was in the audience as you are, they all kinda looked at each other, and we're not, I don't think anybody was sure why we hadn't provided it, but one of them is a long-range plan document required by the Arkansas Department of Health's rules and regulations within one year after the initial date of agreement. Uh, if the city does not, now, have a long-range plan as required by the Arkansas Department of Health, the city show will initiate the development of long-range plans, which obviously we will be initiating that, and number two is the city show provides to the district a copy of a map, which brings up all kinds of discussion, which depicts in service area, uh, it's service area, that's a never-ending discussion, uh, including the service area of any customer in the city which fed results of water to additional customers who are not part of the city. So, nobody, I don't think, I'm not trying to throw anybody in the bus, but nobody in the commission really knew why we didn't do that, and so those are the two things that the city are, have not been compliant, compliant with on the contract.
We're supposed to supply James Fork with a map of our distribution?
Uh, that's correct.
Of our water, we call our water.
Our, yeah, service area.
Yeah.
So.
Quite certain they know what it is.
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's the whole essence of, every time we have a discussion with them, they believe this, we believe this, who has it, where's.
Well, just make the map.
Well, I, I actually suggested we turn one into the United States of America, or, or at least to the state of Arkansas. That is not a quote, this is Drew. I forgot you right there. Thank you for being a lot of, uh, so, there you go.
A legitimate map of what we're gonna service, then?
I, I, and I know this is getting into discussion of later on, water server, water price, and water areas and all that, but, uh, again, uh, Mr. Montana will be here, and he'll, I think he might have some advisors on that, and, and I personally have done it once, and I'm gonna do it again, is reach out to, uh, I can't remember what they're called every time.
So, Natural Resources.
Bruce Hall, and then some director up there, so, we need to have a, a chit-chat.
I'd, I'd still like to see a map, but I used to check there too.
Well, I, I, and I mean, so one, one particular call, and it's been probably two years ago, with, with Natural Resources, I was visiting with a lady on the phone, and was about to circle the beach property, west of town, that we're all pretty familiar with, and trying to get things cooking out there, and, and she, she evidently was looking at a map, and she said, I don't see anybody on that area.
I've got a copy of that map.
Do you? Is that the same one she was?
Yeah, and, and so. That's a no man's land out there.
And then I, then we heard later from now Representative Johnson, that he had had a conversation with him, and it seemed pretty clear that it was whose it was, and it wasn't ours, but so, I don't know, that's just one of those things, I like to be in front of it, along with everybody else, or it be in front of us.
I know that last, the annexation deal we had, the, the attorney general said the water rights stuff was made into a state law.
Here's what we think. We, Doug and I have been having this conversation. As you know, I've wrote most of that contract, and working with Wayne Stallings at the time. This discussion about maps and service areas and all that's been an ongoing discussion for years. Part of that was, of course, the issue. It's like, all right, the water commission laid out, it was laid out. But, you know, I'm no attorney, but, the, the Arkansas Natural Resources, which is still not directly called, it's Arkansas, whatever. When, when Tom and I were on that board that created the Franklin Scott Water Association, this is the wrong name of that too, but I can't remember what we called. We were, we were, we were working with Breedlove, we were working with, you know, to go seek funding to create a water line to feed it to Charleston, to Franklin County, in that area. So, if you go out and say, I'm gonna, I need you to give me money so I can go lay this trunk line out to Franklin County, well, provide to me a map of where you're going to service. What's, what's your water service area that you're intending to serve with this money I'm gonna give you? And so then, Arkansas Natural Resources then gets into this issue of, if you give this water service area off to somebody else, well, then you have impacted what your revenues are going to be, potentially. If you say, I'm gonna service this area, James Fork, for example, said, I'm going all the way down here to Y. C. And so, if that changes for some reason, then the people that loaned them the money, or gave them the money, or whatever, say, well, hang on. Now, you're not gonna have the revenues to do what you told me you were gonna do. It's kinda like the guy I overgrew at the visit here, give me the site plan that you're, what you intend to do. And so, I think, what are service area maps have to do with that? There's nothing, you know, Doug, uh, the mayor and I have talked about this, if, if the city was required to submit a water service area map, my candidate probably know that, or somebody from the misbelieve would come to us and say, where's your water service area map? Greg Cross will know something about that.
Part of them that's me, and I've never asked.
You know, so, the water service area has to do with all that, but then there's, there's some language in there that, that, like I said, I'm no attorney, but when you start reading through Arkansas Natural Resources, which I did last week, yeah, I don't know.
If you, if you build a line and you get federal money, then your whole system is protected by the federal government, and you can afford to play back that line.
So, you know, if Greenwood goes out there and says, we're annexing from here to Hackett, and we're gonna, Ken Posey's taking off the water lines, well, James Fork's gonna get involved in that, they're gonna say something about it, so, I think on that, we got federal funding that says we provide water service area to these people, but, because you're impacting his revenue operation, so, I don't know what the.
And, and I can certainly see that, especially saying, well, hey, you know, uh, federal loans or whatever were based on, you know, the, uh, map customers and stuff, but to me, it seems like they're all gonna be also where.
But to me, it seems like they're all to be also worried in that, but if those customers are, are, you know, you're still a customer of that water district. You know, you're not really, uh, in effect are going to increase, you know, probably the amount of revenue that, that they're, they're getting. You know, then it should still be, you know, an agreeable thing.
When we, when we laid this trunk line through Charleston towards Franklin County, you know, Charleston had their municipal water treatment in their little lake and they can service these couple of blocks. Well, here we came by with this trunk line and we start laying off all this. Everything on that side of Highway twenty-two is this new Franklin water service area. Well, Charleston builds a new water plant and increases the size of their lake and says, well, I want to provide water and I'm going to annex this land along twenty-two highway. Well, we laid out a map that says that's our water service area. Now, not only when they say, well, now I want to annex it, but Indiana's law needs property or whatever. I don't know how that works. That's what people like my candidate are smart enough to figure out, I guess, but I haven't figured it out yet.
His property is already in the city of us. We didn't annex it recently.
Right.
That kept coming up the night, I was like, well, we didn't just go annex it.
But before we go down this, way down this path and, you know, Sunny, we want to annex this three hundred foot corridor all the way to I forty-nine. You're going to get yourself into this discussion really fast. If we annexed it and then somebody comes out there and says, okay, well, I'm going to build, here's my money for the tap fee. We don't even have water line there. And then James Fork can say, well, that's my water service area, you know, Milltown, Washford, whoever you get into that.
Well, they didn't run a lot of third.
See, we got into that with Milltown, Washford out here on where Russell, and we paid the fee to them. Do we have to get into that? I don't know.
Perfect segue you're referring to.
If we annex, let's say, and then somebody comes in to build and we say, well, I need some water for my big old building, our building. We say, well, you're going to call James Fork. Do they have to provide a water?
I don't know.
They have some water in their service area and the guy's going to put a big business in. A hotel or whatever, modern rooms. I think we need some water.
Well, it gets into, you know, and Mike can help you, you know, if you, if somebody, uh, bought a piece of land and said, I'm going to build this big factory, I want to be annexed. If you request to be annexed, what we're required to give you versus we took you by annexation are different.
Right.
You know, if you came and said, I'm going to buy Floyd Brown's property and I'm going to build this Toyota manufacturing plant. We could say, oh, best of luck to you, but I don't have the water to provide that. I can't put out a fire over there. You're welcome to do that, but you're going to need to build some infrastructure to support yourself because we don't have any infrastructure.
The bad thing is if somebody puts a hotel out there on this annexation towards I forty-nine and they don't want to provide water. We say, hey, we'll put the water in the lines in the ground, but we're giving James Fork water, so.
Yeah, well, and we've got this, you know, we added this other layer of complexity to this that in the summertime, three quarters of the water that we're providing came from James Fork.
Right.
So it's going out of loop, you know, to begin with, you know, we create, it's, we shouldn't be into the dispute with James Fork about whose water service area it is. We shouldn't even be in that dispute because it's your water anyway.
It's, well, it's going to be all back there that nobody's going to price it, it's going to be price payments. It's, you know, when it's residential houses, you're thinking, oh, it's something that big. Because, you know, if it's something big, like you said, manufacturing plant or something like that, where we're talking, you know, big bucks and, and big volumes.
Indiana's not, not a big enough customer to us or James Fork to impact the financials of either organization, right? You know, it's not.
Yeah, getting something going out there and getting a water line to it means more customers.
Right, yeah.
Let me correct myself. I said, said that backwards, three quarters of water is made, we buy three quarters of water in the winter because we're still buying five hundred. About two thirds in the summer because we're making more water. So I just said that.
Well, it's not like you've had any stress in the last.
Are we changing the notes?
At least he told you before you.
This voted.
Alright, thank you. One thing that was brought up too at the commission was that, uh, the, I'm helping Greg here, but I feel like that somebody last week said, well, hey, we don't even know about the boil water, you know. And I said, well, it's hard to, to let everybody know. I mean, you tell the press, you can tell, you know, not everybody reads the newspaper and everybody wants us to notify or whatever, you know. I said, it's really hard, but I think the, they are looking at a, another system where it can, you know, kind of notify everyone.
Who didn't know about that boil water?
You believe, ask Danielle on the call. No, don't ask her. Uh, a lot of people claim they had not heard it. One, I, I was, I won't tell you exactly what was said, but I was addressed. Thank you for letting, I'm not going to go there. She didn't know. She had to find out the Taco Bell because they were close, but.
There you go, she knew about it.
Yeah, exactly. So to, to address what you just said, that the water department is looking at this new system that would involve the, um, notification to everybody that is on our water system. It'd be a text message. Uh, it's built into that system, but we are also, Danielle has been on the phone, talking to other companies that offer the same. Uh, and it's, it has a price built into that system. Uh, Danielle, I asked her to call a couple of other folks. We, she called the school, I believe, the people that provide that service to the school. If you have children in school, you get on a test saying, text saying, school to close or whatever. Uh, they only provide four schools, so we had marked them off our list, but you found one that is, uh, called Cox and we're still waiting to hear back from them. And then another company specifically, we talked to at a, uh, dollar per phone number a year. So we're looking at three grand because we have thirty-five hundred customers, thirty-two or something. So less than four thousand dollars a year, uh, unlimited. So it wouldn't be just a water issue, it could be anything. They closed down the street, fire departments giving away free fire ant, whatever. Uh, so we're looking into that in several different ways. I mean, that's, that is the only, that's the next step of better providing information to the public. We did everything we thought we could, or we did everything we could, like you said, social media, big marquees, chamber sign, other than going door to door, which some people expect to do that.
Yeah, but those six speakers are putting on your voice.
On my truck. On my truck. Like, maybe, I think.
This is required getting people and giving yourself hold of them.
Yeah, there, there's, there is that.
Well, it's not then.
Yeah, yeah, you don't, you don't, it's not automatic, but I mean, you have to let us know and then, and then you get it, so. I think it would be very popular, whichever avenue we decide. My, my intention is to absolutely do that, whether it's through the, if the water department decides to buy that system and utilize that or go out on our own to do. But I like the, uh, I like that when you're talking, she's talking to, it's, it's unlimited. Like I said, I mean, we could send something out as much as we wanted to, you know, bulldoze it.
Water, urban, wild, willing to interface with fire. It'd be kind of nice to be able to text notice and tell him his house is burning down.
True, yeah. Absolutely. So that's, that's a good, and that actually came out of, that was suggested by someone. I can't, I don't know, we didn't take names because Facebook, as you well know, can give you a lot of information and a lot of you don't want to hear, but a lot of, sometimes it's, it's, Otis, you asked to speak a moment. Oh, okay. Uh, so, yeah.
Looking at getting an app too.
Hi.
An app, I'm going to work on that tomorrow.
Yeah, there's the option of using an app to do that with too. So, yeah, we're going to do that one way or the other.
Oh, exclusion for buildings.
Anything else for Reggie's out there, like I said, these other department managers here? Anybody have anything?
Can we get the streets?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure you have probably worked on this a million times. Did you tell him about my daggers? No, thank you.
He's.
You been lying to him today? I have not.
What? About what?
Well, I know that the person could blame him about it today, so I'll figure out why that person didn't tell him better.
I'm getting to test because I drove, after I gave him the message, I drove up and I wasn't checking on him, but I drove up there and guess who I found on a backhoe or off a backhoe with a shovel doing it himself. Our city director restricted, so I said.
Well, he stood his faith in work.
I know. But I was, I was happy and, and.
Thank you.
I didn't offer to help him.
It's a drainage ditch filling in.
It's just bad underground.
Yeah.
That is obviously a temporary fix what he did today, but as he told me, it's a mess and it's going to need some.
Well, I can't believe no one else is complaining. I mean, the plan I got was for my wife, that's on her mail route.
The lady, the lady on the other end of the street that owns the tables company mentioned.
Where's this at? Where's Daggers? Just south of those four-way stop areas.
You slide every time you cut the top.
Or east, I guess, or four.
You're going up, Pat, my best police partner, turn right on, on Daggers, right there.
Next to the Mathis Brothers.
Right in front of Mathis.
Well, it's lovely, lovely landscape, lovely area. Close line.
Pour it out, my nose.
Yes, sir.
I got a question for the streets. Center Street is going to be a city street after bypass, who knows when that's going to be.
Soon.
It's falling apart out there, Westwood area, Park Drive, it's all.
Yeah, that.
Is there, yeah, is there, I think I know, fixing that before we get to that.
Yeah, the promise from them is to recondition the road. They don't go as far as saying overlay it, but we can turn in that. In fact, I think I mentioned that to Chad Adams, who's the local guy I've complained to if you will. And I'll, I'll remind him of that. Yeah, I, I thought the day I was going to get lost in that whole.
Hopefully there.
Basically by the church in West, turning in.
Now, we were told a while back that that thing was going to get cities refurbished, full blown standard before.
Yeah, that's, it's supposed to before we get there.
Hope it not only seal, chip seal it like.
Chip seal seems to be the, the fad, you know, I always forget, so I, their standards may have changed by then. Yeah, that is the, that is the promise.
That's great. It's moved up after a while.
Anything else for anybody else that's here? Uh, I, I just want to say on behalf of Chief Dawson, obviously he's not here, he's still home quarantined, I guess. I don't know if you know what happened, but there was a call. The fire department obviously knows about first responders. There was a call and directly to my name, literally in front of Sebastian Kennedy, EMS, right? Guys over there and Chief was there at first and I guess just two guys of an emergency addressed the lady and did chest impressions without any ears, so he's, he's quarantined and then found out the lady that had passed at COVID, so he's quarantined. I know others jumped in and did their thing and appreciate those getting them. Talking about the first responders, uh, who weren't prepared and had to keep you on, keep you on. So thank you to all those guys that answered off. Wasn't wonderful, but it was just a time they were all working together. And what was unusual, I think, too, was it was, what's your name? Amuse, right? There in front of our ambulance, they were out on another call, so. Interesting situation. And Chief, Arch Brian also, it was tested today because of his, of course, proximity to this lady too, although he was prepared, I think, with his students. He went ahead and had a test today, do I?
I'm sure he was.
So, uh, thank you to all those that were involved in that. Pray for y'all safely, or for fire, or for you are for sure, so. Uh, and again, as I think the, the department hit this morning to, as their cooperation continues with the mask issue. I know it's hard and stuff, but, uh, they're doing a good job complying with all of that, so. Anything else that council forum is actually still on, still there?
Well, I don't worry to Gil, I, I just want to let y'all know that I dearly love this deal that you drove in and presented us with that. It would be neat to be to take the lead and try to get something done about this. I know that obviously the municipal league, they didn't care if we're getting a blessing by wearing our thing. It's sure frowned off when we turn that down. So I, I mean, I know it would be a deal we would have to add, put on our dinner, whatever, but I like this. I don't mind being, I mean, nothing mad happened out of this. I mean, it's just a resolution, so it's not like, but it was true. Let the people agree with us or try to do something for them.
Amen.
The rules are still in place. It's like we've said them N times, it's the same, no shoes, no shirt, no service. If you don't have a mask on, then the business owner has a right to. But I think the business owner should also have a right to say, we're opening up full war border league, like other states are doing. I'm not sure what we're waiting on. I know there's numbers and this and that and, and there's numbers against. I know people have had people who passed away do this, but I, I don't know, it's, you know, I, I was, I was close to trying to take action on this about probably putting, because we got these obviously a while back, you know, female, women, just, you know. That's just about two cents worth. I, I wear mine when I have to, but I don't wear it if I don't have to, so. They just, I, I don't know enough about it, I mean, to, I guess, be even talking about it, but it just seems like people are smart enough to, if they don't want, if they want to be safe, they just want to go places where, you know. You shouldn't limit, you shouldn't exclude the masses because of what, you know, twenty percent of operations. Hopefully we'll know something between the municipal league between now and next. Hopefully it's lifted between now and next, at least like they're having presidential elections, this is probably all the way. One way or the other.
Well, I just saw on Facebook that Springfield and Missouri just voted at their council making to extend their mask ordinance till, um, December.
Well, it's definitely. Even if you had mask ordinance, I mean, I don't even want to get started on it because I'm not huge, I can't go for a while. Even if you had a mask ordinance, there's no reason for the restaurant to be closed.
Or churches.
Or the church schools or churches, whatever. I mean, if we can all go to Walmart, we can go to Terry's.
Be shoulder to shoulder on an airplane.
We can be shoulder to shoulder on an airplane. Wear a mask. If the mask worked, then the mask worked, let's go. I mean, I don't believe it works, but that's, but if that's, if we could be on an airplane, shoulder to shoulder, then we can go to the restaurant.
That's, I would, because that's very.
I'm too tired.
Anything else that council can, and a motion and a second to adjourn, thank you very much.